Town Manager Page, ready to begin? Thank you. Good evening. I call this October 25th Meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. Thank you to those watching via livestream and those who are watching a recording of this meeting. On October 28th, a video of this meeting will be uploaded to www.townofmorrisville.org/government/live-video. Master Officer Hogan has served as a police officer for three years and is currently a patrol officer assigned to Uniform Patrol, and I believe they're right outside, as our Sergeant in Arms this evening. Our invocation tonight will be delivered by Councilmember Fender.
Thank you. Breathe in, breathe out. This breath we share with all that breathes. Feel the love of the universe flowing through our community into you and out into the universe again. Let the love of all the universe flow outward. You are more than you know and more beloved than you know. Take up what power is yours to create a safe haven and a beautiful community. Give hope to those you encounter throughout the day that they may know peace. Let us be the light for our community. We know that each time we help another or join with them to heal the world, each time we stand up for justice and what is right, each time we work for others, a spark is created that adds to the intensity of that light. We travel out into the world again to light the darkness and begin again. Thank you.
That is a very appropriate one, given Dolly just happening, so thank you very much for sharing that. All who are able, please stand and join in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the report document for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we adopt tonight's agenda, Town Council policy is to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to share at this time? I entertain a motion to adopt this evening's agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
I have a motion to second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously 7-0. There are four items on this evening's consent agenda: a resolution to appoint a deputy finance officer, a BOA appropriating the Congressional Community Project grant from Small Business Administration, and approval of the September Town Council meeting minutes. Would anyone like to remove any of those items for discussion before we adopt that agenda? Okay. I entertain a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda.
I'll make some motion.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that carries 7-0 unanimously as well. At this time, I would like to recognize Town Manager Page.
Thank you, Mayor. Council's just adopted, as a part of the consent agenda, the acceptance of the $300,000 Community Project grant money from Congresswoman Deborah Ross's office. We have not waited for that money to get started on trying to develop our small business program strategy. And while neither Michael nor Jeannie could be here tonight, so I get the honor of introducing you to Sarah Ellis, who is our Small Business Program Specialist, who started with us in September. She has been busy at work already. She's got a background in planning, including a master's degree, and has worked at Raleigh and is really interested in that community engagement aspect. So she really matched up well with our goals of our program. She's also got some local government experience and knows what community engagement is about in a local government setting. She's recently worked in outreach and community engagement and other projects and has her own consulting firm, but she has been working on some things. She's met with Councilmember Garamella a little bit to get some insights into our Asian Indian small business community here. And so she's just going to give you a quick little snapshot of what she's working on and how she's going to engage with the rest of you. Thank you, Sarah.
Is this the appropriate, this is the appropriate microphone to be using, my apologies?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to be here and it's a pleasure to meet you. Thank you for the couple of minutes. My name is Sarah Ellis. I just started with the town about a month and a half ago, and it's been an honor to be here. And the couple of words I wanted to say about our small business engagement program is engagement's really my passion, that's why I'm very happy to be here. So a lot of the approach that we're going to be taking is meeting the businesses where they're at, going directly to see folks and spending as much time in the community with them as we can and as reasonable for them. Just a couple of things for you to expect coming down the road. We're working on a survey that should be ready in early November. The goals of that survey are to understand the best ways to communicate with the businesses, how they want to hear from us and how we can best reach them, understanding things like best languages to be contacted in, and then also getting a sense of the programmatic items that they would like to see from us. We sort of have an outline of a menu of options the town could offer, so we're going to get some type of an idea of what is most helpful to them, and then continue building out the program from there. But that's just sort of the beginning. And then we are also planning to do in-person visits, so the survey will be going out via email with the understanding that email survey responses get a decent rate, but we really need to go follow up with those folks. So we're going to be prioritizing how to follow up with them based on most impacted industries. So it's probably looking to your food service, your personal care, recreation-type industries. I will keep it brief, but that's what we're looking to next, and it's really, it's a pleasure to be here and it's a pleasure to be working on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We welcome you, and you did a great job with the census a couple of years ago, so we're looking forward to all that passion coming to help Morrisville now. Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet. We have three presentations tonight: Proclamations Recognizing Operation Green Light for Veterans and the Solarize the Triangle Campaign and the Town Center Phase 1 Update. Councilmember Rao will read the first proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I read the proclamation, I just want to thank Wake County Commissioner Vicki Adamson for leading Operation Green Light. And my late father-in-law, who was a retired U.S. Air Force Colonel, would have celebrated on his 84th birthday tomorrow. And one thing he always reminded me is that every day, we need to do what we can to help our, assist our veterans in their transition to civilian life. So if you're a veteran listening, we're grateful for your service. Just some numbers, I just want to say that today, 70% of veterans experience homelessness or substance abuse, and 50% with mental illness suffer post-traumatic stress disorders. And there's 11.7 million veterans over the age of 65 in the state of North Carolina. So now, here it is, Proclamation Recognizing Operation Green Light for Veterans. Whereas the residents of Morrisville have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all of the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces, and whereas, understanding that the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our residents. And whereas, approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually, and an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And whereas, studies indicate that 44% to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during the transition from military to civilian life. And whereas, active military service members transitioning from military service are at high risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas, Morrisville seeks to honor these individuals who have paid the high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas, Morrisville appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Town Council of the Town of Morrisville does hereby recognize Operation Green Light for Veterans and declares October through Veterans Day, November 11th, 2022, as a time to honor the service and sacrifice of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service, encouraging its residents and patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying a green light in a window of their place of business or residence. Be it further resolved, exterior lighting on town buildings along the Town Hall campus will be lighting up green during the week of November 7th through 13th in recognition of the sacrifices of our United States military personnel. Signed by Mayor TJ Carley, our Town Clerk, and the Town Councilmember.
So the Chair of our...
Yeah.
Morrisville Veterans.
Present this to the Chair of our Morrisville Veterans Memorial, Parks and Rec Chair, Bob Butler.
Appreciate you.
Ladies and gentlemen, is that your proclamation? I would like to, I would like to invite everybody, I remember the 12th, the memorial and the first annual walk right now. And it's memorial that is soon to be built, hopefully, within timeframe that we can pick in order to raise enough money. And I can invite everybody, not only the people in the audience here, but also the people listening and watching the video. All right. Thank you.
I'd also like to take a quick point of privilege. Pete Martin, a former council member, is also a veteran here in the audience with us tonight. Thank you for being here, sir. Councilmember Fender will read the next proclamation.
All right. Thank you. So proclamation recognizing the Solarize the Triangle Campaign. Whereas the Town of Morrisville expressed its commitment to sustainability by adopting the town's first-ever master sustainability plan in 2022, outlining goals, strategies, and actions to help reduce the impact of operations, policies, and programs, including greenhouse gas emissions reduction. And whereas, the further adoption of renewable energy reduces public health risks by providing cleaner air through reducing the use of fossil fuels as a result of electricity production. And whereas, generating electricity from solar energy can save property owners, including nonprofit organizations, businesses, and homeowners, money on their utility bills. And whereas, Solarize the Triangle, a community-based purchasing program for solar energy, was formed to help Triangle homeowners, businesses, and nonprofits become more resilient by obtaining volume discounts on material and installation services through the power of purchasing together. And whereas, the Triangle Sustainability Partnership developed this campaign involving Chatham, Durham, and Orange Counties, the cities of Durham and Raleigh, and the towns of Apex, Cary, Carrboro, Chapel Hill, Hillsborough, and Morrisville, facilitated by the Triangle Day Council Governments and solar crowdsourced to encourage solar installations... Man, they made this wordy. To reduce energy use, to improve the environment and public health, and to create jobs by increasing the use and expansion of solar technologies. And whereas, while community members have the ability to install solar panels at any time, the Solarize the Triangle Campaign encourages community members to take advantage of the opportunity to install solar at a discounted rate with a deadline of March 31st, 2023 for the residents and June 30th, 2023 for council and nonprofits. Now therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Morrisville does hereby endorse and support the Solarize the Triangle Campaign, which provides community members an opportunity to integrate renewable energy into their home, business, or nonprofit organization. So I would like to invite Kimberly, our Sustainability Coordinator, to come up here. This proclamation.
Oh, she's making a photo off.
It's a beautiful banner.
I will say, I have solar panels on my home for like five years now, and I, during the summer, mine's, our bill's like $13.
Hold it up for me. There you go.
The Triangle Sustainability Partnership is a new so proud to say that Morrisville had the first and overall, he, and me has
Thank you, Kimberly.
Okay. Brandon Zudema, Deputy Town Manager, will present the Town Center Phase 1 Update, and please feel free to use props.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Again, thank you for some time tonight. As you recall, you endorsed the development plan for the Town Center project back in the end of July. Since that time, we have been working feverishly towards the Development Services Agreement. Still a considerable amount of work to be done, but did want to come back to you with an update on where we are with that, some minor modifications to address some of the questions you posed. And as I think most of you know, we also recently completed a public survey that had a number of good responses that we want to share some information on that. I'm going to ask to come up, we have Avi Graywall with Sing Development, and Todd Rankin is here, and Money Graywall is here. I'm not sure all are going to speak necessarily, but I'm going to do a quick introduction. I'm going to turn it to Avi and to Todd to talk through some of the modifications and some of the things we're still working on, and then I'll jump back in with the survey results and some other sort of steps going forward. All right, so again, tonight, we want to show you just some very minor revisions that have been done to the plan you last saw in July. Those are aimed at, again, answering some of the questions you posed and also just continuing to refine that concept, answer, excuse me, answer some of those questions you had posed. As I mentioned, survey responses, and then also really a status on where we are with the Development Services Agreement. Want to give you some examples of the level of detail we're dealing with there, so you can appreciate when I share with you the updated timeline, why that looks like it does, and then after that, some next steps. So I'm going to turn it over to Avi and to Todd to talk about this model and some minor changes there, why they're there, and then some other work we've done.
Everyone, good to see everybody again. I'm just going to hand this straight off to Todd, because he can speak to it better than I can.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Happy to be here tonight and present where we're at. So what you're looking at here is an updated program that we've been working on over the last several months, and wanted to just go over a couple of the larger areas that we have changed since the last time you've seen this. One of those is Carolina Street. And what you may recall is Carolina Street, as it comes off the roundabout, it comes in between the park area and that purple shaded building, and before, it went kind of straight up. And that did not align with where Carolina Street is going now. And when we were looking at that, we determined that for future, it really made a lot more sense to keep the alignment as it is currently, and then those blocks further into the next phase, as you go further east on Carolina Street, made a lot more sense, because they were deeper. Otherwise, they would have started to get shallower as they start to, you know, converge on one another. So what we did is we, we kind of realigned it to where it is currently, and then we have a potential of picking up a little bit more townhouses, a little bit more room for that flex commercial or that retail plaza area. So that was one section that we did want to point out. The other is on the bottom right of the image, it's the public parking area. What you may recall is there were, there was quite a bit of discussion about that fenced area and how that fenced area was going to serve the police services and how that was going to be handled and screened and everything. So we've been working with the Police Department and Chief Acosta, and we've had meetings with them to determine, you know, what could we do there? And right now, we're considering, it looks pretty favorable to relocate any kind of fenced parking on the east side of the part of the building, and that's where the main entrance is now. And we've been working with engineering as well to determine, could we do something with the building so that there's more of a public face on the town, the town park area side? So that that parking area serves as more of a primary entrance point to the police station, and then you'd have a face to that, to the, to the town center area. And then all of the park, the fenced parking would be, then, at that point, it would be kind of behind the police building. And then we did revise the property boundary where a couple of properties along Scoggins has been, have been picked up by the town. So that line just identifies where those additional properties have now been acquired by the town. So those are really the main changes since the last time you've seen that. So we wanted to present that to you tonight, just so you're aware of what we've been doing.
One quick question about that last slide. It says four new townhomes. So does this reflect those four new townhomes being on the far right there?
Those that are circling there? We're not there before, so previously it was 24 units, now it has potentially 28.
Okay, thank you, sir.
That'll impact, you know, when we circle back with pro forma and other things.
And it also, I mean, we're still in discussion.
Thank you.
Avi and Todd have addressed this as far as the parking, and so just, but it's now the front of the Police Department and where the engineering entrance is, that could potentially be the back of the building for the purpose that might look like and how, what, if any, impact that would have on the building itself. Things that we're still working on, one of which is the Parks and Rec Administrative Offices. I know we had some conversation about that, but we are of the opinion, in consultation with Sing and in working through things, that the best option for that is in a little bit of that cottage retail space. So if you go back to the map and if you look sort of down at the bottom here, this is an area that's also working to be revised right now around number 11 and number 15. Not only to look at how might that retail, you know, perhaps face the green and the park a little bit more, but also talking about access to the back of the stage and how all that's going to work. So that's, again, still being refined, and we'll be circling back with what that might look like and how that could accommodate not only Parks and Rec admin space, but also the restrooms that we've talked about wanting to provide for the space. They could potentially attach to that building so that they could separately, and again, have access outside of normal admin hours to where they could have a locking device and be open whenever at the park or at the town green. Access and design, we are still working with Parks and Rec and Public Works. We're going to show you some images in a second of what that might look like. And then also, a water feature, again, we'll show you some survey data that supports that even further as we get to that, but the possibility of using that entrance coming from what is now the area of the Healthy Food Hub, potentially including a water feature that could be there, but doesn't have to be interrupting, you know, walkways and things like that. Again, we'll show you some imagery on that. And then lastly, we are still working on the Western Wake Farmers Market layout to have them sort of around the outside of the green. So we had an initial meeting with them just to get some very feedback on what this looks like and how it might impact them. Formal meeting with them and with Sing, so we can sort of hear back from them, okay, we like that, we don't like that, this will work, that might not work, and here's why. So we can sort of negotiate that with them to make sure that policy is what we are trying to do as a town, but also accommodates the farmers. Actually, once we have more details. We had a great meeting with Parks and Rec and some of the infrastructure and engineering folks, and there was a lot of, I mean, not just them, with Sustainability Coordinator and, and the Police Chief and just everybody in the Fire Department, and, and, you know, it's been great to work as a team together. So some of these images came from our meetings with Parks and Rec and kind of some of their suggestions, and, you know, they got, you know, we have ideas, but to hear their ideas on the town green and the amenities there from the lens of people that actually work day-to-day in the Parks and Rec was just, you know, very exciting. And so they came back, we asked them, you know, you know, this is kind of what we just thought, so if you guys had ideas, what could you come back with? So these are some of the thoughts from, from the amphitheater stage type of setup that makes sure, you know, they're not just thinking about design, but they're thinking about function on, in terms of like sound and being able to have performers be able to back their truck up to where the stage is and being able to haul their speakers or equipment in and out. And so these are just some of the thoughts that they came, came back with, that, you know, we're evaluating, that will, will work into the next update on the overall plan. Yeah, and again, same thing, just some thoughts on that they had, that they've seen elsewhere in the, in the country on, from a water feature perspective. That's it. So if you guys have any thoughts or reactions to some of these images, we're happy to take them today.
Would anyone like to share thoughts on first the stage and then the water? Maybe if we can just go through once and share your thoughts at each time, both of them at once, I'll start. We'll just go from right to left, it looks like, right now. Councilmember Abadi?
Yeah, actually, I don't want to talk about the stage or the water feature. I'm concerned about the idea of taking up one of the cottage retail sites with the Parks and Rec Department. I'm really looking forward to those little cottage stores as, you know, as cool boutiques and artisans and, and I all love to park with Parks and Rec. I don't consider them to be a destination necessarily, that, I don't think they add anything cool to that space. Again, wonderful as I think they are, don't email me.
But yeah, I think, you know, and we have heard that concern, and again, we've not made any decisions, but I think some of the counter to that, that we've talked about, is the ability to have almost like a mini welcome center as people begin to come and staff there that could, you know, talk to people and share some ideas about what's going on. It would be a place to advertise, you know, upcoming events and it's a mixed, we understand the concern with taking up the retail. Part of that conversation, correct me when I'm wrong, is that, the idea is that that's not necessarily a permanent home for Parks and Rec, but that's a way to fill space at the upfront portion of this project. And so as they gain momentum and as they see more people interested, Parks and Rec perhaps ends up going somewhere else, whether that's in, you know, a future phase of Town Center or somewhere else entirely, but it would help to fill the space early on, would give us a presence in the park, would be advantageous that way. But I do hear your concern. I mean, I think it would have to, the discussions we've had with Parks and Rec, and I think they all, would have to be an interactive space. It wouldn't
Yeah.
Office space and
Yeah.
Have to be some sort of like community-facing.
Honestly, I think that we should make sure that we message that to the public as a welcome center, because I, like, when you said that, literally, I changed my mind and I was like, oh yeah, we need that. So, you know, I think that, I mean, messaging, you know messaging is everything. And I said I didn't want to talk about the pavilions or the water features, but I lied, because if we could get solar panels on the top of this wavy one, I'm all about that one. And the, I don't think this is going to shock anybody when I say the water feature that I vastly prefer is the one with the lights and the rainbow and the, I mean, I really like that, that's super cool.
Pretty creative. But I think what, what we've heard, just real quick, and then we'll definitely interest in a water feature. Something ideally that when it's a water feature, it's great, but when it's not, you can still just kind of walk on through there and still have access. I'll stop there and let you continue down the road.
Anything else, Councilmember Abadi?
No, sorry.
Okay, Councilmember Scoggins-Johnson, please.
So I love the updates.
So I love the updates and the, the new map is very helpful. I wanted to weigh in on the stage design options. I do like the stage on the right-hand side, which is the wavy one. Solar panels is a great suggestion. I would imagine that you would have a ramp for ADA compliance to that as well, or equipment. You know, there's a lot of load, but it would be very iconic to have something that's not just a flat structure that gives a little character to the space. Since we don't have possible trees in the background or a water, you know, like a lake or anything, to make that stage have its own character and personality, I think is important. Related to the second water feature items, I do like the lights. The fact that you can change them, the fact that you could possibly change the water, you know, spray options and so forth like that. And then also, when it's not in use, to have it as a standard walkway would be good so that we could use that space for multiple options. But definitely think it would add some character to the space as well and some fun.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mayor Potem Johnson, I'm sorry.
So I'm just going to echo what you've already heard, because I don't need to repeat it. But yeah, to have a unique stage design, I think it would be fabulous. We've talked about how we need to make something really unique out of this area. So whatever the, the actual structure is in the end, I guess, the only thing I would say about the, the structure, that it makes sure that it's raised enough. You know, we, right now, we do music in the park and the, the music is at the same level as the folks sitting there. So the, you know, if you have, and I see that, and I know these are only examples, but to have a stage that's up so that if we're really going to have 1,500 people sitting in chairs, that they all have the ability to see the stage for whatever entertainment's up there. But yeah, I like, I like, I like this idea, however it ends up in the end. And then with the water feature, I do, I just do need to echo the part about the lights. I like the steam, so if we're going to do steam, what, what about snow? I mean, well, you know, let's go all out and.
Please, I moved here from Michigan.
I like the snow around here because it doesn't really stick too long. So, but we had, we had a tree lighting ceremony a couple of years ago where we had a snow machine. So that's why when you said steam, I was like, well, I'll bring in the snow idea.
One of the things, examples we've seen where they have a splash.
Interesting.
Be a stage for.
Fabulous. That's fabulous, yeah. And that'll come with time as we finalize, I know that. I mean, you might as well even consider synchronizing, having some kind of a music synchronized light show too.
With the Bellagio?
If we're going to go all out, let's, let's have, see what that option costs first. But anyhow, but the, these are all, I think the, to have this kind of a water feature for our youngest citizens to be able to play in, I think would be fabulous. We've heard that over the years, so it looks good to me, so thank you.
Thank you. And as we're working our way down, can we go back to the other slide? Because I'll just piggyback on that. I love the Bellagio idea and having some programming there. When you're talking about winter, if it's possible to have it set up so we could have a temporary ice skating rink there too, on top? That might be a winter thing. I like the color as well. I like how there's different streams and it's not just all the same height, which is also very nice. So I prefer the color, it looks really nice. Especially, it's once again, the preference survey. This is just such a beautiful one with a background too, so it makes you, you're drawn into this a little bit more. If we could go to the other slide, I also like the wavy. I was thinking, when you look at the big map, how 15 is right behind this and this is a gathering space, I would be interested in knowing if it would be best practice to keep, without having the little brick wall in the back, so the stage can face both ways. So it could be like theater in the round and/or if you want to put something in the back of the stage to, to block the front, that's fine. But then you can also move it to the middle and essentially have two stages facing two directions for like a play or something like that. So that's just my thought about that. But the wavy, I think draws me in a lot more than the other two. And I really like the fact that it's open backed. I didn't really like the closed backed, because I like the idea of having the people behind also being able to see. So those are my thoughts on those two items. So thank you very much, a lot of good work so far on this.
I'll gladly take the credit, but this is your Parks and Rec Department that.
They are accredited and they are great people, great ideas. So thank you very much for sharing that. Councilmember Fender?
Yeah, I'll echo what a lot of the other council members have said. I like the wavy stage. I'd be interested in seeing even like what other unique designs could be done to make that like more iconic and stand out. I think that would be, you know, it would, it would go with what we're trying to achieve for the town center. I do want to go back to the cottage retail discussion. When we talk about the Parks and Recs being in that location, are you talking about them being in one of the little cottages or multiple cottages? So how many is that? About three?
Essentially, I don't, I mean, and it could be stories, if it's two stories and it's maybe less. You know, I think we haven't, we haven't gotten far enough into the design of what that building would be.
And also, if I could just add that it, these are just conceptual kind of blocks. We could consider something that it was like one structure that could then be subdivided later if, if they're, you know, no longer there, we could subdivide, it becomes three cottage users or maybe it's one. Well, I think we're going to design that with future flexibility.
But it would still only be one building. It wouldn't be.
It would be one building, yeah.
Yeah, I don't really like that. Because then they're not, they don't fall into the cottage design of the other buildings.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Todd, I think whatever we designed there would still have, would still stay true in the cottage retail shape. One of the things we're doing this week. Parks areas as well, and so, you know, take feedback and then. Start securing those type of third-party designers. We can take this feedback, like, age, doesn't have to be the waveness of it, but it. We want it to look unique, something special.
Yeah, I'd be interested to see what your design ends up looking like for the building that would be for the Parks and Rec. See how that turns out. As far as the water feature, I'm fine, I agree with the rest of the council.
Thank you. Councilmember Rapp?
I think that I like the wavy, I think pretty much everything that I was going to say has been said. I like the wavy structure, I really like the creativity of it. One thing I've been thinking about a lot is, you know, continuing to look at what's going to make our town center different. And I like this notion of kind of the entertainment, you know. Mayor and I, last week, were at Apex Cultural Center. We sort of observed having a cultural center, but anything entertainment related. And I know that Councilmember Garamella, last week, attended the horseshoe at the hub opening. And, you know, I've been reading about that. And it's basically, you know, 100 acre, I think it's 125,000 square foot of mixed use with, you know, 1,200 retail units and office. But doesn't necessarily mean we're competing with that, there's room for both. But what can we make that's unique, that would draw a different type of demographic? And I think this hits the nail, families, entertainment, that kind of stuff. So just wanted to throw that out there as our partners to just continue to think about, you know, what is healthy competition? We're not competing with RTP, but what can we build that's different and unique? So, but thank you, that's all I have for now.
Okay, either the stages or the water features, you have preference for?
Oh, no, yeah. I'm fine, could you go back to the water features? I don't know, I, I, I like the, the, I like the one with the lighting, because I think that's, I just like that image, but I'm fine with either one. I, I mean, they're both fine to me, so. There's just something about, maybe it's because it's DiValli season and I like seeing like lights at nighttime, but it's just something about that image I really liked, but, you know.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Garamella?
Most of the things I have said, I think, let's pick my point. I think the state has to be elevated. And honestly, I don't like any of the three. I would like non-wooden structures because the maintenance of it and those kind of things become a headache, like Kokaboot or something, which is like metal or something that is like, you know, rust-free and we don't have to go through maintenance and those kind of stuff. And also like where you can put the side screens and those backup LEDs, you know, you need those things on the top, so you need a lot of beams running. This is good for like, for namesake, but if we are serious about doing stuff, and I consider this as our, you know, Kokaboot kind of a stuff. And so I would rather have like a good structure with non-wood, which is, we don't have to maintain it and like metals will be there for a longer time. And, you know, running beams or running, you know, for the props and all those things that we need, these things won't even allow you to do those kind of stuff. So that's, that's my first thought when I looked at this one. And coming to the lights, you know, this one, obviously, like, as Steve said, I went to the horseshoe. It's a, when, when you have a splash pad and steam, I did not know if that's, that's a good feature too. And we can utilize, many places utilize this LED lights with seasonal too. If it is like Independence Day, you can have Independence colors. And like, you know, Indian Independence, you can have those colors and like, so that way you can program it. So it feels more homely and, you know, saying we're welcoming a kind of a thing. So certainly with the lights and have seating around because the parents have to sit for a long time, you know, watching their kids, because my son, if he goes in, you know, when he was a kid, he used to never come out, you know, so long. So that's something, you know, they just love us going into the splash pad and enjoying it. But it was a good thing, I'm, I think I like it, I think water feature is good. Obviously, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with not having a fountain, what I wanted, but.
You are?
Money knows that, so like, but other than that, I think it's, it's a beautiful.
Okay, we've all had a chance to weigh in first. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Abadi and then anyone else who wants to have a second shot.
Oh, I just wanted to say that I think that's a really well-considered point about the wooden structures. And I, I wouldn't mind when you come back seeing some, you know, some other options too. That's, because that's a great idea.
And I just had one more thought that I forgot. For the water fountains, maybe a shape of an M like we did at our Stormwater. Might make it a little iconic as well, as part of that. Any other thoughts on these two slides? Okay. Please continue.
Thank you. So want to move into the community survey responses. I've got most of the data here, I don't necessarily want to, you know, read it off the, just want to hit some of the highlights and you can certainly review that. But as a summary, we had this available by the internet, social media. We also did our three public sessions of the week of October 5th. Got a reasonable turnout. We did piggyback on the PD's national out to get some people, but that worked out. This survey was available from September 27th, October 12th and got 87 total responses, 83 of those residents. And as you can see, a pretty good diversity of response there across the community. Idea, again, a good diversity across the age ranges that responded to this. So I feel like we have a good sampling. 52 of the 87 resident, responded, excuse me, had household members that were under 18. That's there. And we asked them to report what neighborhood they were from. And this could be higher, given how people answered, but we know at least 22 people involved and responded to this. So again, a pretty good diversity of community. And then there were some of the other responses, and I'll, I'll speak to some of those. Some of those, quite honestly, were, we had someone that liked to enter the same thing every single time, so not going to bother you with that. And some were just answers that were already one of the options. But I'll hit some of the highlights of what some of those other responses were. So again, what would you, what would draw you to town center? Not surprisingly, a water feature scored well. The plaza and open space scored well, as did the accessible playground for children. You know, what I would say with that is that that sort of tells us that we need to do a better job of advertising what we have at Indian Creek and making that complimentary to this. And of course, we'll do that with wayfinding and with other messaging. Help those things. And then there was mention about, you know, making sure the stage is accessible. Would also say that one of our keys, and you actually will probably see that in a spreadsheet I'll show you, for that we're all looking at complete accessibility, not just ADA requirements, but even beyond that. What sort of events or activities? Our town special events were high here, so we're confident that's going to continue to be a good draw. Farmers Market was well-received, as was movie and music on the green. And as you look at those stage options, particularly with the movies, for those movies, doesn't have to be a wall, but we'll, we'll make sure that we do that as we develop. Those were the higher scores there. And again, concerts as well, something new that we may be able to offer before. Type of activity you typically participate in? Again, walking, so sitting and relaxing, socializing, all scored well, family events. So this is in tune with what you have, private, your vision for this area. Also helps us continue to align the. Interest in public art, I would say that's a resounding yes at this point. We have some interest in revolving art, something that might change over time. Also, a lot of interest in a mural. And I know we're continuing to work on our policy as it relates to that. So as that develops and we continue to see what options there are, that's something we'll continue to work on. Interest in a children's museum, 54, 33, but keep in mind how many of the responses that folks under 18 do not all have. And then very similarly, would you pay a membership fee? And what might that museum provide? Family programming on the top of that, along with an exhibit space, summer camps, and then other opportunities for youth. Surprising, but rather is reinforcing of. What means will you travel to town center? Again, one of our focuses is to make this a multimodal accessible area. So we had, you know, a good, a good amount with gas vehicle, not surprising. That's the focus perhaps more so today. But had a lot that would walk there, a lot that would bike there. We got a strong response on the Smart Shuttle, really happy to see that. That shows that that's becoming more of the, I think, the mindset of our community, so that's great. And then a little bit interested in ride share and electric vehicle. And again, I expect the electric vehicle will continue to. Charging stations available there and then do things. We also asked about sustainability, because we want to know that for this program. It also, I think, gives Kimberly and her staff some additional information. So we prioritize from one to six, the different master sustainability plan focus areas. Natural environment was the number one priority. So that, again, aligns with what we're trying to provide there. Energy and water, so we still have opportunities to discuss how we do that intelligently and efficiently. Cycling. Fourth was transportation and then built environment and greenhouse. Doesn't mean any of those aren't important priorities there that align with what we're. How important for the four attributes from the town center project in terms of sustainability? Priority again, natural areas, pollinator gardens, native trees and plants. Priority again, natural areas, pollinator gardens, native trees and plants, and water features, so. Environment, and again, Kimberly and, and Jeff and the team from Sustainability. Second priority in that regard, accessibility via multimodal options, so we are absolutely focused on doing that. Visible solar arrays, you've mentioned that tonight, we are certainly aware of that. Uh, and then electric vehicle charging stations, again, doesn't mean it's unimportant, just means they see opportunity, uh, for that area of town as well. So I think a few things worth noting, uh, some of which came in sort of the other responses, and just somewhere some summary. Again, good diversity in responses, I think we got what we were asking for or looking for in that regard. Clear interest in open space, which clearly we're doing. Interest in an open classroom or pavilion, which is good. Like, and how that may be seated. And then again, a water feature, and I've sort of already mentioned that, you know, with the uh, and then clear interest in some type of public art. And already talked a little bit, some of the preferences there. Got, um, folks that we're going to be reaching out to, that Singh is already reaching out to. I had a gentleman the other day and just randomly found out he's an artist. I said, well, here's my card, you need some information, because we might be able to use you or help you, and so connections to, you know, area art groups and, and other things. Find that as well. Uh, lastly, uh, shifting town special events and continuing the Farmers Market will continue to draw people there, so that's good, we already have an existing base. All upon, um, and interest in the children's museum, and we provided some very, uh, unique options that might be supported. Uh, what are we doing with this data? Not only, you know, we have it, how are we using it? So obviously, we're using it to share with you. Um, we have shared it with Singh, so that they are also seeing it as we have these conversations. Our team, our Town Center team is looking at this. Obviously Parks Recreation Cultural Resources are going to have a large impact on what we're doing. Planning to make sure that it lines up with what we're going to accomplish, uh, with this development area. And then public works, and particularly sustainability. Uh, again, as I mentioned, shared it with our museum partner. And then we'll also be sharing it with, um, Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources Advisory, as we continue to go back to them as well, to ask about things like, how should the stage look, and how should the education? Else will be shared with them. The other thing I want to mention real quick that has come up is, you know, we need to obviously to reach out to the community. Done that with a couple of surveys, we've done that by reaching out to library, and to the Farmers Market, the Education Garden, and we're going to continue to do that. So we envision, you know, probably another set of surveys and community meetings. But also doing specific meetings with the neighborhoods there. Want to be good neighbors, we want to make sure they understand what we're doing. Already having some of those conversations, some of that occurred at one of our public sessions. Maya had some good questions and some good points. All that, as we look at, you know, everything from street alignment, how are we going to control traffic, to what's the facade going to look like on the multifamily to make it blend in? All that work is continuing as we questions about the survey or about the outreach that we're working on.
No, I'm sorry, yeah, I was going to start with Councilmember Abadi, then Councilmember Fender.
Um, yeah, I, I agree that it's important to get feedback from the neighborhoods that will be immediately impacted by the, by the Town Center, the actual construction and the, the makeup and design of it. But I think that it's also, I think neighborhood meetings, especially if you can get some kind of turnout, would be great in as many neighborhoods as we can cover, honestly. Because I, like, it just, I, I'm concerned about like, survey, survey responses from eighty-three people driving anything. You know, I, like, I appreciate the input, of course we do, but that, you know, that's just not a lot of people. And so, you know, I just, I think we should do anything we can to be firm engagement there. I mean, I know you know that, I just want to say it, you know, like, eighty-three people is a very small slice of Morrisville.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Fender, followed by myself.
I have a question about something you said earlier. You said about the playground, um, being ADA, but you're also looking at even being more accessible, going beyond that, so can you tell me a little bit more about that?
That, not only, I think, accessibility, but also inclusivity. So we're going to make sure, of course, that the, the green is ADA accessible. Access that and can access the, the area that goes around with Farmers Market and other events will occur. We're going to make sure that we've got access that's appropriate coming and going from parking lot, um, that we have alternatives for people that may want to get onto the stage, or years in the stage. Also want to be inviting in terms of making sure we're looking out for appropriate signage, for people that may have disabilities in their regards. Also want to just genuinely make sure that we're taking those steps to aren't required, but that make it more welcoming, and make people feel like they're know what some of that is, and some of that we still want to continue to ask. Concept, and know where things are definitely going to be, how do we continue to look out?
Okay. And then a comment about, um, the solar panels. I, I am interested in seeing on the roofs, either solar panels or even gardens, um, if that's possible. You know, could we possibly have solar on each one of the cottage retail buildings? Or could we have solar on the buildings three and four? The retail space.
Some of that's a possibility.
Yeah, some, definitely a possibility, I mean, I was in Seattle a couple of weeks ago, and I was snapping a bunch of pictures, I was taking, sending links to Todd, getting really excited, because, you know, some other cities in the US, they're a lot further, especially on private development, on right in the right direction here with Kimberly and the sustainability plan, but like, you know, I think there's all sorts of, not just solar, but green roofs, like you mentioned. How do we use, I thought one thing that was pretty cool. Park, where it looked like they cut, an old tree had fallen down, or they cut it down to make way for the park. They use it, they kept it there rather than chopping it up, and they made it a play structure with the wide that was attached to it, and so how do you, you know, how do you, you know, that's a sustainable move, but it also is one thing, and so really to put, to get it in people's faces, and so, you know.
I think it's a, I think it's important to, um, ensure we're leaving enough green space to, and, and not create a hotspot with all the buildings and the asphalt in the Town Center, so I think that should be a consideration.
Definitely a conversation point. Um, we've talked with Kimberly about that, so that's, that's definitely a focus.
All right, thank you.
I just had, uh, two quick things in, uh, building upon Councilmember Abadi's thought about getting more outreach. The idea of having, um, this slide like, on a two-by-three that you could put on a big table, and people could come to an HOA, like, uh, a couple of years ago, we did a planning in a box going to HOAs, I mean, we don't necessarily have to have staff involved, just send it out to the HOAs, and they can fill out handwritten surveys or something right there, or someone to do that, I think that would be great, I'm not sure if we're too late in the process to get more input or not, but that's
We used that when we did the public input sessions, um, back in the first week of October. We also have an updated that aligns to this, that we'll be using at State of Mor.
Right.
Have the opportunity to continue to use that.
Okay, so we'll probably be opening up the survey again, perhaps, or something like that?
A survey, not necessarily
A survey, right, understood.
Better define this project, I think we'll know better. Or what if we sort of, you know, we think we know, but the council's interested with communities. Don't want to ask the question just to ask the question, because we, us surveys, and we want it to be meaningful. That is timing, some of that is content, some of that's keep it short. Helped me a lot with how we need to do that. So again, some of the questions you ask, but we want to be very asking questions that we want slash need the answer.
Right. And then when it comes to nine, all the college retail, cottage retail. I know Carolina Street is what we're envisioning as our main street, but is this possibly a second main street? Will there be a front, two front doors to cottage retail? Is that what you guys were envisioning?
Idea with that extension of Foxglove to, to have that more estrian scale, to have, you know, a front cottage retail on that side. Dining component to some of those spaces. That is the idea there, to have that.
That'd be facing in and out?
Oh, yeah, exactly.
Okay, I, I like that idea very much, I think that would be a nice, uh, way to do that. Councilmember Scott Johnson, followed by Councilmember Garamella, please.
Commented this.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, I
It, it was
Yep, it was the wrong one, Mayor Portem Johnson.
Thank you.
My apologies.
So I'll, I'll start where the mayor just left off. I, I just wanted to verify, in the cottage retail, the, the upper portion of the cottage retail has outdoor dining. That's outdoor dining in front of it, or close to the park, right?
I mean, we, I mean, we haven't really programmed that deep into it, but I thi- I think that's definitely an option that we could have, but we haven't, we haven't gotten that detailed.
Okay, okay, yeah, I couldn't remember if we had talked about that or not, but I think that's pretty important, quite frankly.
Having outdoor spaces, we were just talking to, uh, afternoon, and he was like, number one thing, outdoor spaces, he was like, that's asphalt up, whether rooftop or outside of the restaurant space.
I would agree a hundred percent, and you're in the business, obviously, more than I am, but yeah, I, I totally agree from, from the customer standpoint. I think the last couple of years have, um, made us very accustomed to eating outside. And I'll tell you what, I don't like eating inside anymore. I like being outside, even if they have heater, I'm looking for places that have outdoor heaters, so. So anyhow, okay, so, yeah, that, that
Some of the users we've talked to have also said that they like being able to offer that outdoor, I mean, that's
Yep, yep, good, good, okay. Actually, and the, the two comments I wanted to make was, um, Brandon, you, you, you hit the nail on the head with, um, wanting to reach out to specifically the close by neighbors. Because I was at those events too, where some of those neighbors came across, and, um, they're concerned, as rightly so, about what this is going to look like, um, because they, they're across the street, and I'm talking specifically of, um, Church Street towns, but then Downing Glen as well. So I appreciate you taking the effort in those two communities especially, to do an extra kind of outreach, and, um, you know, as far as outreach to the rest of the community too, because this is, these are amenities for all of us, but, um, and I, so thank you for that. And then the only other thing, and I've said this before, but I'm, I just want to make, I'm going to say it again. The Farmers Market area, the, the idea that they can pull up and have their tents and their vehicle was really important in this last go-around, when we talked about, um, the Healthy Food Hub. So I just want to make sure that that's not lost in this conversation, and where they may end up in this, um, new Town Center, so.
Not at all, so, um, I presented this to a group from the Farmers Market that has that was some of the feedback we got, was, you know, really important, have the vehicle there, really important that it's wide enough for a lane to park and a lane to pass, so, um, we shared some of that, particularly with Todd. And that board settles, we'll be meeting specifically them, work directly with, with Todd and I.
And you said that, so thank you, I appreciate you take, making that effort with that. Yeah, it is important, thank you.
Councilmember Garamella, please.
Brandon, I wanted to circle back to the parks and recs. I think, uh, I asked that question last time, and the answer I was given, and I was sure was, as part of the parks and recs, that they will have restrooms. And that would be the key, because none of these areas have restroom facilities, so the parks and recs will act like a, you know, restroom here, is that still the case, or?
That's what we're looking at right now. Again, I hear the concern about using that cottage retail space, so I do hear that. But that is part of the concept of having that building, is attaching to that building restroom facilities that you wouldn't have to be able to access Parks and Rec admin, or the Welcome Center, however we define that. It would be attached, but sort of a standalone facility that could be locked after, you know, the concert show is done, or whatever it might be. Folks don't have to come and go from the admin office, or even the Welcome Center, but they have just have to build just a singular standalone. That cost is, as we've talked about, like Harris Mill and Dog Park, and things like that, that it gets pretty expensive.
Yeah. I, I think I wanted to highlight that, because I was sold with that idea last time, you know, as much as like, having, using the facility close by is super critical, you know, so, uh, that, and then the other thing is, are we more about the cottage? If we can have a rooftop, you know, then, boy, I think if there's a concert and people sit on the top, I'll be, I'll be the first person taking that seat, you know. So, and it, those, those, those are kind of ambience that creates that, the whole atmosphere changes. And I think any effort to create that, uh, would be really nice, you know. Gives them the higher balcony kind of a facility that, with garden style, that they can nicely have dine and, you know, look at the concert, and whatever it is. I like solar, but I think this area would like more of a rooftop, uh, where people can, you know, enjoy more eating space and, uh, outside, and go up if they want to do it.
Councilmember Fender, please.
One quick comment was Satish's, or Councilmember Garamella. I, I think the rooftop restaurants on the cottage retail is a great idea. I was in Charleston, South Carolina a few years ago, and they have rooftop restaurants everywhere. And, um, it does create a nice, uh, environment, ambiance, um. Then, I want to go back to the Farmers Market. With your current design, what is the thought of where they would set up and how they would get in there?
Sort of in this corner near fifteen. Ability to come through that parking lot and come into this, um, hardscape that goes around the town green. Idea is that that would be, and, correct me if I'm missing any important point. That would be constructed in a way that you could bring, you know, a standard vehicle, like no tractor truck. All trailer on it, would be able to come into there and be able to pull into basically their vendor spot, and then other vehicles, it would be wide enough for other vehicles to go past them and pull into their spot, and then there could be an exit area perhaps number seven, or even if they get into this area, we could work it out, if they had all the way back through have to like, have a vehicle where they back in, that may be a parking lot in front of fourteen. Section of that area for those.
So then would their tents be like around the green?
Yeah, that's the idea.
All right.
Looks like everyone who wanted to have an opportunity to speak on these, uh, did, and I'll recognize Councilmember Abadi.
Just really quick, all this talk of bathrooms. Let's be the only set of bathrooms in the known universe to understand that we need more ladies' rooms than men's rooms. Like, three times as many, because there's always a line outside the ladies' room, so let's just, let's just keep that in mind, you know, like, let's dig deep and really get that right, because yeah, let's get that right.
I think, I think they heard you, um, I want to just, you, Brandon, you've mentioned, uh, that you heard us about the Parks and Rec. I would just like to know, big picture, if this is going to be a temporary that we're kind of helping out, making sure that there's a good ROI for the developer to start. I want to make sure that we're not doing a whole lot of upfitting, and then we're going to have, move them again and outfit them again. That doesn't seem like the best use of our resources. That doesn't seem like the best use of our resources. So where Parks and Rec Admin is, I understand that's in a reasonable rent. So maybe if we have some other use here in the meantime, and just consider leaving them where they are, because it's working. And then having a Welcome Center that's not really outfitted, but an open space for play, or something like the Hive that Carrie uses. It's more of a big shell, and then it could be used for something else in the future. So that's just a more long-term use of resources, is, just wanted to share that. Okay. Ready to move on to the next section?
All right, thank you. So the Development Services Agreement, again, just want to give you a little background on the work that's going on as we talk to you about what the timeline is likely going to be. So our DSA team, as I would describe it, is more than 30 staff members from the town staff, from SING, from DFI. Just an example of all the different departments and staff that are involved in this process are listed there for a variety of reasons. Some obviously more directly involved than others. But taking an approach that's similar to what we've done with our own capital project, is involve as many people as possible early on, and then start to thin it out as you go when you don't necessarily need them to be involved in that capacity. But I think as Avi alluded to, there is a large group that meets, but then more importantly, there's all these separate smaller meetings going on. So we've had, I don't know, 12 or 15 smaller group meetings over the last month even, of just catching up with, you know, planning to update on what we're working on, or to catch up with the fire department about the size of the apparatus, and is that going to fit where we need it to go. A lot of those different groups are meeting. In that vein, our kickoff meeting in September was held to sort of really orient everybody to what we're trying to accomplish, and to let everybody in that group hear what others were saying, or what challenges they were start to help each other, or look for overlap. We'll have those recurrently, probably in the next 30 to 45 days, just to bring everybody back together. Here's where we're at. What are our priorities? Are we, are we handling most of what we've done since has been amenity based, but we're continuing to meet. Library, for example, to talk to them about how are we going to handle little things like, where's their trash bins going to go? Because they have a dumpster spot, and we're going to take it. So things as minute as that to the bigger, you know, much bigger, how do we rezone this property, and how do we deal with all those? Sort of the whole gambit. Again, this is just some of the examples. I'm not going to read those to you, but a lot of the different work that's going on that has to be managed through this process. And I include this, just an example, this is one of, I think, four pages that we have, what we're trying to work on. So just a real variety of all the different issues. This is all stuff that needs to ultimately be in that Development Services Agreement. So we had a very good meeting with Avi and with Molly Stewart, their attorney from Morningstar, talk through, what else do we need to get you? What else do you need to be able to develop the DSA and the three standalone agreements and all the documentation? And then in turn, we've got to make sure we're putting it together all in the right order, so that we can work through the process with Michelle and her team. Development request, and just want you to see that there's a lot, a lot of detail going on there as we talk about timeline and why this may at some point be like, when are we going to see this? Well, I promise, we are, we are working through it. But we also want to make sure we're thorough on the front end, and not try to chase things to make it better on the back. So from a timeline, the MOU that you all approved last year called for the DSA based on when you approved the development plan to be completed by December of this year. We are not going to be ready in December with the development plan. The amount of work that needs to be done is not what we anticipate is coming back to you next in December. And that will include a request to amend that memorandum of understanding to provide some additional time for the development of the DSA. We support that, SING supports that, we're all on the same page. And this is not anybody looking at the other going, why aren't you getting this done? We're constantly working together as a team. Back to you with that. Again, we are hoping to have the draft of the DSA together before the end of this year. We are working regularly between our town attorneys to get that done, and then hopefully being prepared to come to PZB. Had to come to you. Probably a three-meeting process to get through, to give you a brief process, and come back for a full presentation, have questions, and then ideally come back. Have a lot, a lot of detail in it, so we will make sure we work through that. Timeline as we see it right now is completion of our draft DSA Development Services Agreement by the end of the year. Approval of that DSA in the spring. Permitting completed by the fall of 2023. Construction beginning by the end of the calendar year. And then Phase 1A, which would be completed by the end of calendar year 2023. We're not far off of what we have talked about with you previously. We are pushing that back a little bit, just based on amount of detailed volume of information. Not dramatically different from what you've heard. So our next steps is to continue to work on that language in detail for the DSA. Planning and aligning our talent funding strategy. Obviously, Jeannie and Michael will be a big part of that with us. They're one of the groups that's been meeting with SING on timing, and when is that money going to be divided, and all those sorts of things. Creation of the land acquisition agreement, the parking lease agreement, development documents. So that is all going on now with SING, with Molly working on that, Molly Stewart working on that. We're also looking at developing our rezoning and plan development applications. It'll start with PZB. Department, again, we'll end that MOU in December. And then we anticipate an update to you in December.
Okay, because December, we only have the one meeting in the beginning. So that's pretty aggressive that you guys are bringing it forward.
There. We will not be a heavy lift at that point. We will be an update lift, and
Yep. Okay. And I guess we also need to be prepared, part of the DSA is going to be talking numbers. We've been talking more concepts for a while. We're going to be digging back into numbers.
Right, and that's some of the detail that we need to have, is, you know, who's going to build what? Who's going to pay for it? When is that money going to be due? How are we going to manage these? So I think we've made some good progress in some of that detail that we'll be able to share.
I don't think we have any questions, sir. Is there anything else you want from us? Sounds like you have a lot to go forward with.
I think we've gotten some good feedback in terms of, you know, what you're looking for, for the stage and for a water feature, so that's very helpful. Again, as Avi said, I really want to compliment our Parks and Rec Department for coming together and going out proactively to find that and to send it to us to, hey, gotten that feedback, which is good. Hear you about the cottage retail space and the admin there will continue to discuss that. Work. As you noted there, that does have a really good impact on pro forma, depending on whether we're there or not. But just little pieces.
Thank you all. Thanks, the entire team. Sounds like there's a lot of people working beyond the scenes.
I'm just the front guy.
Yep. Thank you to SING and your team as well. Thank you very much. Happy holidays. Okay. Great. Very good. Thank you all. So we're going to move on to item nine now. Town Clerk Smith will present any public comments received. Do we have anyone signed up or anything we've received, sir?
Well, sir, there were no public comments received. We do have one individual signed up to provide public comment. Mr. Haggerty?
Okay, and then I'll ask after.
Right.
Welcome back, sir. If you could share your name, address, and your role for the record, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor Colley. My name is Chris Haggerty, and I'm here in my role as a member of the Wake County Board of Education, Vice Chair representing Morrisville on District 7. My address is 7729 Sandy Bottom Way in Raleigh, North Carolina. Unfortunately, not Morrisville, but I'm still very pleased to be here. Thank you for your hospitality. In my comments today, really what I'm here for is, well, you know that I'm here to watch the continuation of your business, the consideration of the extremely important interlocal agreements that'll help make possible Morrisville's first traditional high school. And then I'm also here to celebrate the ribbon cutting from last week that we had at WCIB, right? The Wake Early College for Information, for Information and Biotechnologies. The mayor was there, gave great remarks. Many members of the council were there as well. I want all of you on the council to take a minute, and I really hope that you appreciate this incredible accomplishment that's taken place during your term. You know, this is the result of collaboration between local governments, not just the town, Wake Technical Community College, the school system. And you've done what people have said was impossible to do, what people have been working decades for, making these two new, not one, two new high schools for Morrisville possible. And so I hope you appreciate the accomplishment and the gravity of what you're doing and accomplishing tonight. But I do want to say, even though I'm very hopeful that you will move forward with these agreements, passage of these agreements is, does not get us over the finish line. There's another crucial step, and those are the county school bonds and the Wake Tech bond that will be on the ballot this fall. For those who may not know or haven't been following it, those bonds will make possible the design and construction both of the new traditional high school, but also completion of Parkside Middle School, and additional work on our early college that'll be split with a facility there sharing on the Parkside campus, and then also the main campus there on Wake Tech. So we're doing great things. There's great things ahead. I'm looking forward to your vote tonight. But please don't forget the importance of those bonds, the Wake Tech bond and the county school bonds that'll help take this dream we've all been working so hard for and make it a reality. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here tonight. Now, is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak for three minutes on any subject of your choosing? Whether or not you signed up, that's fine. If you'd just like to go ahead and approach the microphone and tell me your name, we'd love to hear from you. Okay? Yes, please, sir. So your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. I'm Brian Laurel, CEO and co-founder of Social Equity, local tech company. I live in Carolina Beach, 1200 St. Joseph. But I have a business here where I started this whole new contemplation around affordable housing. So I'm a serial entrepreneur. I was here a couple of weeks ago at the planning and zoning working session on affordable housing. And I had some concerns and, quite frankly, a couple little surprises of things that I learned and heard and saw. You know, Morrisville, last year in 2021, built 1,650 apartments. And we heard in the survey at that time that many of the workers that want to live in Morrisville can't afford to live here. The affordability gap that faces our nation affects every town and city across the country. There's over 38 million people under the age of 40 that have a good education, have a good job, have a good credit score, and can't afford to own a home. And that situation is only getting worse. Compare those 1,650 rental units that were built last year. Only 70 townhomes and 80 houses were built in Morrisville. The average price in Wake County is 483,000. The average price of the homes in Morrisville is 400, excuse me, 563. So what we've done, I've invested a big chunk of my life savings to start this company to really partner with state and local governments and different communities to bring new options to people. And so what we do is we have a safe way that people can pool their purchasing power and buy it together. We're seeing a strong interest from teachers, from single parents, from grad students, from tech workers. You know, if you're making less than $100,000 in Wake County, you can't afford to buy a home. Plain and simple. It's just not going to work. So we've created this capability. I wanted to inform the council about something that Denver is doing. Denver, Colorado, Denver County, has just released a new program here a few weeks ago that was really focused on giving grants to community members to buy homes, right? And when I heard some of the things in the planning and zoning about recommendations on price incentives and subsidies to large contractors, that $3 million they're recommending would be better spent to create a grant for teachers and service workers to help afford a down payment on a home. Home ownership is the path to equity, generational wealth, access to education, like so much is, like, has been written on that. So I felt, I felt concerned, and I wanted to address you, Mr. Mayor, and the town council, to really just share those concerns. There are viable options. We have a new option, right? That money would go to help community citizens, not line the pockets of builders who are large corporations anyway. So I just wanted to address that and bring it up. I am engaging with HRA, the consulting firm that's doing the study, the feasibility study. So I've got more meetings with them. They're interested in learning more about social equity. So anyway, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on any subject of your choosing for up to three minutes?
Hello, my name's Sahana, and I live in Waterford Apartments. I am an eighth reader at Sterling Montessori, and I'm a student who used to carpool to school in the morning and walk back home from school in the afternoon. So my request has something to do with that. So my first request is establishing a pedestrian signal by the Tree Brook Drive and Park Place Avenue-Tred Street intersection, because my apartment entrance is connected to this four-way intersection road. So when coming back to, coming back from school, I had to cross this road to get to my apartment entrance from school. So vehicles are always passing by at this point, especially during the weekend mornings and afternoons, since this is the point where people come to pick up their carpool, their children. So I'd say these timings are like the most hectic times. In afternoons, I've noticed that many cars line up on the zebra crossings of the roads. So as a walker from school, this made it really difficult for me to cross the road, because blocking the zebra crossing blocked my view of the cars coming from other lanes, which made me unsure when to cross. And this issue isn't just something that I witnessed, but also an issue for other walkers from my apartment. This is why the intersection itself should be declared as a school zone, so it prevents accidents from occurring. My second request is that a traffic signal should be established, which would help, which would be helpful for many drivers, including new drivers. So in the mornings, many kids are dropped off at my school, and I see that this creates a lot of traffic. And because there isn't a proper traffic signal, many drivers have chaotic transitions when turning into streets without a proper navigation turn. Therefore, this leads to a high chance of car crashes in the area. And this is a danger for people who are crossing the road as well. As a pedestrian, a pedestrian, a pedestrian signal and a traffic signal will put all of these issues in control. So it'd really help to establish this, to show awareness to other vehicles when someone is crossing the road, and a traffic signal that works during the hectic mornings and afternoons of the week days. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for coming forward to speak today. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to share anything? Okay. So just to let you know, when we have public address, we do not address those issues directly. Obviously, our staff hears it, and if you want to make sure that our town clerk has contact information to follow up with you on these issues, that's always very helpful as well. So thank you very much for sharing your thoughts at this time. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Scotty Johnson.
So I just want to know if there's a procedure that, does the Public Safety Advisory Committee take traffic concerns as part of their remit? Is that something that we would want to have them look at? The pedestrian crossings, for example?
I'd love to hear staff's opinion of that, Mayor.
Okay.
So that sounds like something
I just wanted to know, you know, how it's managed.
Right. Okay. Thank you, Town Manager Page. Appreciate it. Okay. At this time, we are scheduled to take a break for 15 minutes. So if we could reconvene at 7:46, that would be wonderful. Thank you all. Town Manager Page, ready to come back in? Okay. We are now at item 10, public hearings. There are two public hearings on this evening's agenda. A proposed amendment to ordinance 2015-010, and a resolution approving an amendment to the Comprehensive Transportation Plan. Thomas Lloyd, Planner 2, will brief counsel on the first item. Mr. Lloyd.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just to give all of you a little bit of background on this item, on April 28th, 2015, the town adopted a ordinance which approved a zoning map amendment establishing conditional zoning for Wake Tech Community zoning for Wake Tech Community College located at 433 Knowledge Drive. And one of the key conditions on there was a list of uses that were established as being permitted on this property. In order to facilitate the partnership that the school board vice chair mentioned earlier, the town of Morrisville has been working with the trustees of Wake Technical Community College, and Wake Tech is requesting an amendment to the permitted uses on these properties to include emergency services, high schools, middle schools, and elementary schools. Planning Director Stegal will be bringing additional items to you all tonight later on. So there were two previous rezoning applications, the one in 2015 that I mentioned, as well as one before that. Several conditions from the 2015 rezoning will also be amended as part of this, just for the purposes of clarity. So I will now get started with the presentation. All right. So the amendment request is an amendment to ordinance 2015-010. The applicant and property owner is Wake Technical Community College, like I established earlier. The current zoning is conditional office and institutional, and the current land use is college and undeveloped. So you see the portion of the property there that is undeveloped. So the total site acreage is 92.11 acres. The land use plan shows this area as institutional, and it is inside the corporate limits and is used as a college currently. So in terms of the surrounding area, to the north, it shows zoning as office institutional as well as regional activity center. To the east, it shows it as office institutional. To the south, it's transit-oriented development and office institutional. And then to the west, it is low-density residential and parks, greenways, and open space. So as I mentioned earlier, the 2021 future land use map designates this as an institutional use. And just so you're aware, some of the preferred uses that are mentioned as institutional use would be government buildings and offices, emergency response facilities, schools, and higher education facilities. So we'll now go into the revisions of some of the conditions. And as you can see down here, additional conditions that are being added are emergency services, high schools, middle school, as well as elementary schools. For this one here, this condition is clarifying that this particular condition, this was in the previous ordinance, will only be applicable to college and university uses, with the intent here being that a high school and an emergency services building would not have to go by this condition. So this is just clarifying that this condition is strictly for Wake Technical Community College and college or university uses. And this condition here is clarifying that for college or university uses, in terms of parking, they will be complying with what was in effect in the parking ordinance for TOD on April 28, 2015, which is when they originally got their approval. And the reason for that is so their existing property and their existing parking is not rendered nonconforming by this amendment. But this is just clarifying that their parking area will go by what was in effect when they got their original approval. So here is the sketch plan, and I want to be clear that this is just a conceptual sketch plan. It is subject to change, but you can see here is the school area on the site, as well as some athletic fields, and then also a proposed, you know, open space nature park for the town, and then the fire station, the proposed fire station would be up here. So, you know, this is just a sketch plan. This could be subject to change. Really, what we're doing tonight is just making it to where, you know, these two uses are allowed on that property in the conditions. So on October 13, the Planning and Zoning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of this ordinance, amending the previous ordinance, and the town of Morrisville Planning and Zoning Board found that it is reasonable and in the public interest because it is consistent with the 2021 land use plan and allows for uses that are compatible with the uses in the surrounding area. Staff also recommends approval of this ordinance that would amend ordinance 2015-010, and it is made for the same reasons, because it is consistent with the 2021 land use plan and because the uses are compatible with the uses in the surrounding area. So in terms of action for the town council, you will open the public hearing, you will then close the public hearing, and then you will take action on the ordinance. You should have a piece of paper that has a sample motion right here. So yeah, other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and take care of the public hearing items, and then we'll ask some questions. If that's okay with everybody. I declare the public hearing now open. Do we have any speakers in the room who would like to speak on this subject? Okay, Town Clerk, did we receive any input on this? Okay. I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion in a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. The public hearing is now closed. Does council have any questions for Mr. Lloyd or staff? Okay, seeing none, I'd entertain the motion as written here.
I'll make them.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Rao.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for ordinance 2022-3640. May I proceed?
Yes, please. Please proceed.
May I proceed? All right. In accordance with North Carolina General Statute 160D-605, the town of Morrisville Town Council finds that the proposed amendment to ordinance 2015-010 is consistent with the town of Morrisville's...
It's got both in there, Mayor.
Inconsistent.
Consistent is what we're looking for.
Okay, that's right.
And then approve.
Consistent with the town of Morrisville's comprehensive plan, and I hereby make a motion to approve ordinance 2022-3640 of the town council approving an amendment to ordinance 2015-010 that approved a zoning map amendment for Wake Technical Community College located on property company known as 433 Knowledge Drive. The proposed amendment is reasonable, consistent with the comprehensive plan, and it's in the public interest because, A, the requested amendment of ordinance 2015-10 is consistent with the 2021 land use plan, and B, the requested amendment of ordinance 2015-10010 allows for users that are compatible with the uses in the surrounding area.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second? And I have a motion in a second. At this time, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously. Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. At this time, Michelle Stegal, Planning Director, will facilitate the next public Would you like to ask questions before the public hearing?
Whenever.
Okay. Why don't we go ahead and take care of the public hearing portion again? I declare the public hearing open on this item. Or is there anyone in the room who wanted to speak on this item? Or any public comments received on this item, Town Clerk Smith?
No, sir. There were no comments received and no individuals present to provide in-person comments that signed up.
Thank you, sir. I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing on this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. The public hearing is now closed, 7-0. I'd like to recognize Mayor Pretam Johnson with the questions.
So, Michelle, I just have one question. That private road that you show along the edge of the property, yes, some of that is already in existent, but it is definitely going to be complete out to the other end. Is that correct?
I can... Because what you're looking at is a feature of... Both have interest in maintaining that.
Yeah, because it is very important that there be that connection so folks can exit both ends of this 100-acre property. So, okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Just to piggyback on that, it's not on the current transportation plan, that road?
It is. It is. We want to have the public...
Okay. Is it possible to add that to our CTP as a road, or would that go against our intentions?
If we're looking at... Again, as opposed to a... Narrow pavement.
Councilmember Rabadi, followed by Councilmember Garamella, please.
Yeah. Are there two ways to get out of the fire station on this plan?
But you're seeing this normal access drive. One is no parking lot, and one is the fire station.
The other thing that's contemplated that is... Is commented in some... Okay, and what's this road in the back? Kind of, yeah. Like, what's the road in the back? Is that Paramount Parkway?
This one?
No, the one on, like, on the top right. It looks like a big one.
It's Paramount.
That's Paramount?
Oh, up here, yes. That's Paramount.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Just trying to orient myself. Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Garamella, please, followed by Councilmember Fender.
Yeah. I would like that road to be private because it is their property, and if we make it public, then they're set to our standards, and then I think we have to maintain it too, because then they will give it back to us, and then it's a whole different level, like any subdivisions then they develop and they give it back. I think keeping it within the school system and let them take care of it, you know, is much better, you know, than taking that responsibility for us. That's my two cents, because it's their plans, let them do, because we don't get into their carpool lanes, you know? That's their limit, so I would rather not touch that area.
Anything else? No. Councilmember Fender?
Private road, I just want to clarify. So it's private to Wake Tech? Wake Tech is responsible for that privately?
Yes, they are.
So do we know at this point that the school system would extend that road through? Okay. So it seems like once the school is built, they're going to have to have that road to get in and out, right? So at that point, would it end up becoming a public road? Okay. Okay, all right, thank you.
Mayor Pretem Johnson.
So, yeah, this road connection needs to happen, and I know you, Public Safety, I'm sure, has, going to want to weigh in when the time comes, because that could be, again, really needs to be an exit and entrance on both ends of this property, the way that road, that private road is showing. And I'm fine with it being a private road, too, I understand the reasons why it's going to be a private road, and we have a school board member this year that's here, hearing our concerns about that road, so I'm fine with that. I think we've shown that we're all good partners and collaborating to make this successful, so I have confidence in that, in the work that you're doing, Michelle, so I'm good, but that road needs to be connected.
Looks like everyone shared their thoughts, and just to clarify, that was my knee-jerk, but I know a road has to be built if it's on our plan, so that's where I was going with that, but I'm fine with it being a private road, and it looks like that's a lot of stacking for carpool as well. I know Green Hope had to rejigger their entire thing in order to make enough room, so this way it'll already be there, so I think that's helpful in a number of different respects. So, at this time, would it be appropriate to entertain a motion? Yeah? You want to put it up on the screen? Okay, I'd entertain a motion.
So I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-396, the Euro of the Mooresville Town Council approving an amendment to the comprehensive transportation plan to remove a portion of the Markham Drive extension.
Second.
I have a motion in second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much for the hard work, we appreciate the partnerships that are ongoing to make this happen. And now, we're at item 10B, and actually, no. Now we'll move on to the action item, so you'll be staying there, obviously. Number 11, action items. There's one action item on this evening's agenda, Wake Tech and WCPSS agreements. Michelle Stiegel, planning director, will facilitate the item. Council was previously briefed on the item at their October 11th meeting and is asked to take action on the item tonight. These are actually different agreements than we, oh, actually, those are my notes. Okay, back to you.
Actually, we can tell from what we saw this item at the October 11th meeting, and just to remind you, and anyone that may be watching, this item is actually for, to certain areas that are considered, the first, the interlocal agreement between the town of Mooresville and the community college. So.
There's a lot of information in this packet. Does anyone have any questions about any of these items? Okay, these will be four separate motions and votes. I'd entertain a motion on the number one. Mayor Pretem Johnson?
So I just want to make a, I'd like to make the first motion, but I'd like to make a comment, and then I think, I think we should take turns on these motions. This is a long time in the making, and we all have a part in what we're about to approve here, but I really want to thank school board member Chris Haggerty, who spoke earlier tonight and talked about the fact that we need to take the time to celebrate, that we're here at this moment, making this happen, but, and you alluded to this, too, there are a lot of people that worked on this project to come to this moment, that we, the seven of us that are here, are really fortunate to celebrate. There are many councils that worked on this, there are many staff members that worked on this project and this collaboration, and I mean, staff members, not only here in the town of Mooresville, but in the Wake County School System, at the Wake Tech Community College System, there were different leadership at Wake Tech back in the day when this was approved here in the town of Mooresville, and even though leadership has changed and staff has changed, we all value education and value the fact that we have schools here in the town of Mooresville, and you are right, we are all to celebrate, but I think we need to remember what all those that came before us. So, having said that, I would love to make the first motion to approve Resolution 2022-379-0A of the Mooresville Town Council approving an interlocal agreement between the town of Mooresville, Wake Technical Community College, and the Wake County Public School System. Second.
A motion in second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously, 7-0. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Garamella.
Yeah, I want to make a resolution 2022-379-0V or O V? Of the Mooresville Town Council approving amendments to the joint use agreement for Cedar Folk Elementary School.
Second.
I have a motion in second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously, 7-0 as well, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Rao, please.
Yeah, I'll do the next motion, mayor, and I just want to reiterate what Mayor Pretem Johnson said, you know, it's just, it's every person on this council is, and every member of our staff has been responsible for this great achievement, and I think we do, or thank school board member Haggerty for reminding us that it's this kind of collaboration and innovation that's enabled bringing all these parties together, it's a huge achievement, I cannot emphasize enough what this means for the future of Mooresville and the region. The schools, Wake Tech, the town of Cary, our county commissioners, all of us coming together has made this possible, and each and every one of us needs to pat ourselves on the back, along our staff, many times, for making this happen. Thank you. I make, I make a move, I make a motion for Resolution 2022-379 OC of the Mooresville Town Council approving a lease agreement with the Wake County Public School System related to the construction of a new fire station.
Second.
A motion in second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously, 7-0. I'm looking to the three people who haven't made a motion yet, would anyone like to, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
I'd like, thank you, mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Rabadi. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-379-0D of the Mooresville Town Council approving a lease agreement with Wake Technical Community College for Parkland.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously, 7-0. Congratulations to everyone, especially on the pretty sweet deal on number four, for a dollar a year for 25 years, that's, we appreciate the generosity of Wake Tech and Wake County Community Colleges and WCPSS. Thank you very much, anything else you need from us, planners today? Okay, thank you very much. Well done, everybody. We can have a little clapping on that, I think.
Yes, I think.
Okay, we are now at item 12, future meetings, events, and citizen involvement opportunities. The Western Wake Farmers Market offers healthy and fresh food, goods, and live music from small and local businesses from 8:00 a.m. till 12:00 p.m. every Saturday. This Saturday, it's a little extra special, there will be trick-or-treat at the market, so adults and kids are encouraged to get dressed up and join us to create their own trick-or-treat bags, color Halloween magnets to daycomb, and enjoy games like monster ring toss, God bless you. The town of Mooresville's Environmental and Stormwater Committee is sponsoring its 17th Annual Student Art Poster Contest for Mooresville students and/or members of the town youth organizations in grades K through 5. Participants are asked to submit original artwork in support of the environment and sustainability. This year's theme is Bees, Seeds, and Butterflies. This year's theme stresses the importance of creating more habitats for our pollinators, particularly monarch butterflies, which have been threatened by habitat destruction and climate change. The grand prize will include a sweet treat from Nothing Bunt Cakes in Park West Village, and tickets for a family of four to the Museum of Life and Sciences in Durham, including the Butterfly House exhibit. Submissions are due at Town Hall, right outside this door, in a nice box, by 5:00 p.m. on October 28th, which is this Friday. Please see our social media or website for more information, official rules, and a fillable entry form. And we also have another exciting contest underway for our teens. The Mooresville 2022 Stormwater Division Photo Contest is open to all of Mooresville's high school age residents and youth organizations to showcase their photography talent and their commitment to clean stormwater. This photo contest will help us achieve our goal of increasing public education regarding stormwater. The overall winner will have the winning photo displayed on our social media sites and the Stormwater Division webpage. The eligible grade groups are 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade students, or homeschool students of high school age. Each student may submit no more than two entries, which must be received by 5:00 p.m. on Wednesday, November 30th. For more information and required entry forms, please see the Stormwater page on our website. There will be a free blood pressure clinic at Mooresville Senior Center Friday, October 28th, from 1:00 until 2:00 p.m. Ask your medication questions and learn strategies for managing your blood pressure during the free blood pressure clinic. It's at 4117 Davis Drive. A senior care pharmacist, Casey Baldwin, from Resources for Seniors, will host a question and answer session as well. To register, please call 919-463-7140. Very exciting, this is the time of year for our Fall Green Day. That recycling event will be held on Saturday, November 5th, from 9:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. at Church Street Park. This is a drive-through service for recycling or proper handling of hazardous materials. Stations will include paper shredding, medication take-back, and e-recycling. There will also be collection stations for textiles, fog, which is fats, oils, and greases, and batteries. We are collecting non-perishable food as well to donate to Dorcas Ministries. For more information, please search for Fall 2022 Green Day Recycling Event on our website or see our social media. We are having our Mooresville Veterans Day Celebration on Friday, November 11th, at 10:00 a.m. at Indian Creek Trailhead, 101 Town Hall Drive, right across the street behind me. The event will honor veterans who live in Mooresville and those who work for the town of Mooresville. Brigadier General Retired Johnny Clinton, the commander of the Lowe's Grove American Legion Post 416, is scheduled to be the keynote speaker. Parking will be available at Town Hall, 100 Town Hall Drive. The town is growing, and your opinion matters. Apply to be a member of an advisory committee to be involved in the town's decision-making processes by providing input on important matters to the town council. The deadline to apply is Monday, November 14th at 5:00 p.m. Apply now on the town website. For a listing of events, please see the town council calendar at www.townofmooresville.org. Follow our social media and sign up for a weekly email, which comes out on Fridays, which also includes lots of great info. At this time, I'd like to recognize my fellow council members for comments. At this time, we'll start off with Councilmember Rabadi, followed by Councilmember Fender.
Yeah, I'd like to give a shout out to the Women in Politics Club at Green Hope High School, they invited me to speak earlier this week, and we had a very lively question-and-answer session, which convinced me of something that I've been saying for years, which is that young women will save us. They are politically engaged, they are articulate, they are passionate, and it was really, really great just to be with them. And I just want to congratulate my fellow council members, most of you have been working on everything we accomplished tonight, so much longer than I have, and it's just humbling to realize what we have the opportunity to do for the citizens of our town. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Rao?
I have no comments, mayor.
Councilmember Rao, followed by Mayor Pretem Johnson?
Just a couple of comments. First of all, I just want to remind everyone, early voting is going on until November 5th, and just make sure you find your voting sites, and then the election is on November 8th. I want to congratulate DSV Temple for their opening of their hall, and also the governor coming to issue a proclamation, along with BAPS. I was not there, but I want to just thank the communities for these huge achievements. Trick-or-treat trail was great, and a couple more things, I attended the U.S. Committee on Immigration and Refugees Reception last weekend, and Chair Hutchison was there, and it was just a really great thing to see a local organization doing a lot to welcome refugees, to hear really, really great stories. My final point is, last week, Swades Charagi, who many of you know, received the Order of the Longleaf Pine from Governor Roy Cooper for his exemplary service and success in fostering a successful U.S.-India relationship, and for his, what he did as a pioneer for political engagement. And the title of his, it was a great, all the people, you know, Speaker Moore was there, Congresswoman Ross, many, former ambassador to India, Richard Verma, but the main thing is, I just want to emphasize one point that I was thinking about when he won this award. His book is called Building Bridges, and I think that a bridge is often defined as something we have between two points to get us from one point to the next, but if you look at Mooresville recently, I feel like bridge building has become a way of life. You look at the Diwali celebration we had in Mooresville, all these great cultural events, it's really bringing people together, and I think it's something that we should be very, very proud of. Yesterday, you know, President Biden and the First Lady hosted a Diwali event in the White House, and it's just amazing that even the White House is making Diwali something that they can share with everyone, this whole notion of light over darkness, so I just wanted to end on a positive note and just thank all of the organizations that are hosting these events, including the president, because I think it just, we need more positive thoughts to get us through tough times, so that's all I have.
Mayor Pretem Johnson, followed by Councilmember Garamella, please.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of tag-team off of what Councilmember Rabadi said about how humbling this is, and how this is a time to celebrate what we just did here with the agreements with Wake Tech and Wake County Public School Systems, but unfortunately, all of it hinges, so we can celebrate for one minute, because all of it hinges on whether the bombs passed or not this year. So I would like to remind folks that you have two bond questions on your ballot come November 8th, or if you're early voting, and one definitely is for Wake County Public School Systems to build the high school and the middle school we just talked about tonight, so I encourage folks, personally, I encourage you to vote for the bond. So I encourage folks, personally, I encourage you to vote for the bonds, and for the Wake Tech bond would help with our Wake, and it's a mouthful, our Wake Early College of Information and Biotechnology that is presently here in Morrisville, but would help, help them expand too. So I personally encourage folks to vote in favor of the bonds this year. I just have three really quick things. One, you heard tonight about the Morrisville Veterans Memorial Foundation and their walk on November 12th, and I emailed council the link so you all can register, and I hope, I hope you will attend. I think the Veterans Board would be really happy to see all of us there, and to bring all your friends and family too. So they're hoping to have a good turnout for this first walk that they're doing to raise funds to build our memorial, our Veterans Memorial Foundation here in Morrisville. One other, oh, and so Happy Diwali, sorry, I'm looking at my notes. Happy Diwali to everyone. Yesterday was a, was a fabulous day. Saturday, we celebrated Diwali here in Morrisville at our own event, but yesterday was officially Diwali, and several of us ran around to several different events in Morrisville, and I thank the governor for attending and being here in the town of Morrisville yesterday to sign the proclamation for recognizing not only Diwali, but India Heritage Month in October. And then lastly, I just have a request of staff, and Martha, I, I didn't think about this when, when we were talking, when we had our one-on-one month in conversation, but, and it reminded me too, when the gentleman who spoke here tonight about affordable housing. We have a couple of affordable housing units in some of our apartment complexes, or at least one, that's been up and running, and could we, in sometime in the near future, get a report on how that is going, how those affordable housing units are activated, and how that whole process is working? I know we oversee it because it was a part of the rezoning to the, and I'm talking specifically about Alter Ren right now. I think that's the only one that's up and running. So if we could sometime in the future, just get an update on that, I think that would be helpful. So that's it, that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Garamella, followed by Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
Thanks, Mayor. I think I agree, like, you know, last two meetings have been a wonderful meeting, and we, so much we approved, and this was one good meeting too, you know, we got a lot of things done. And Martha, I did make a comment last time, you know, you left all the goodies to Brandon for a lot of approvals. But on a different note, you know, I, I too agree, like, for the town to acknowledge Diwali and celebrate Diwali in the town, and I think that was very well taken. I like Bob Butter saying it should be more on the evenings, I think where the fireworks and those things can play a bigger role and draw more people. I was very fortunate to meet the governor three times in last week, and I have to give a lot of kudos to Martha, because this Darshana, which came in, I, you know, first talked to her, you know, she basically heard, and she took the initiative to talk to the Apex and the other managers and Wake County people, and it was a traveling exhibit that landed up in the Capitol Hill too. And I had the privilege to, you know, explain to the governor for half an hour going around the charts. It, it's like a lot of things, which I felt was, we already do it. Like, you know, we, we do yoga, the orthomatic started in India, and the Zero started in India, so, and holistic medicine, Ayurvedic and turmeric and all those things. So it's, it's like, it's a way of life, and that's where I was trying to explain. And it was very well taken, and I think the governor is using that every clause, you know, like he used three, four references to go about it, but I think the kudos goes to Martha for initiating that and going across different cities and towns. Thanks for that.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy Diwali. I loved the Morrisville event on Saturday, that was really nice, and thank you to Councilmember Robati and Mayor TJ Colley for doing an awesome performance at the event, and by no means will I ever participate. You just shamed me into never doing that, because you did such an awesome job. Thank you for your bravery and courage. I would also like to add that November 8th is a very important day for everyone in the area. Please vote for this election. There are many important seats. Our Wake County Commissioners are running for reelection, and the first time in office, we are, the school board is up, and in Morrisville, we do not have a town council election this cycle, but, you know, the other offices that impact your daily lives are up for consideration. November 8th is also the two bonds that Mayor Pretem Johnson mentioned, and the bond for the Wake County Public Schools will impact Morrisville families directly. The schools that are to be funded with that bond money are the new high school, traditional high school, and it will affect, you know, the timing and making that a reality. The second bond is related to Wake Tech. Wake Tech will, is in a joint agreement with Wake County Public Schools that has the Early College, and they need funding for that Early College area, but they are also expanding the Wake Tech campus. Wake Tech benefits all families in Wake County. There are a lot of training and retraining opportunities, so to have them be able to provide the services to all of the communities in our county is a really great benefit to all families of any age. So I urge you to vote, and I urge you to consider those bonds favorably, since it will affect positively the Morrisville community. And that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll echo that we can each personally encourage people to vote in favor of the bonds, and I also do that. Please vote for both bonds. Happy Diwali to everyone. As was mentioned, I'd like to say a big thank you to our staff and countless volunteers for creating and managing so many successful events, which bring our residents together and strengthen our community. I loved our expanded Diwali event and had a great time at Trick or Treat the Trail, where we saw inflatable dinosaurs, and Garfields, and real-life princesses, and rainbow unicorns aplenty, among, along with some nice mattering of superheroes and Star Wars characters. Speaking of strengthening our community, thank you to the countless organizations in town who have walk-a-thons, COVID testing, COVID vaccinations, education and sustainability advocacy, and so much more, all of which benefits our community. As was mentioned, we are honored to welcome Governor Cooper to Morrisville on Monday to celebrate Diwali and Hindu Heritage Month at the newly renovated Baps Temple. We appreciate his leadership and friendship in both good times and when we face challenges, both large and small. So also, please consider applying for a town advisory committee, and encourage your students to make a poster or submit a photo for some of our town contests that I just mentioned earlier. At this time, I'd like to recognize Town Manager Paige, in case there's anything from staff that she'd like to share.
No, thank you.
Not at this time. Okay. I'd like to see what the council's appetite is, is for skipping our break. We're scheduled to have a break at 9:10, but we could take a quick 10-minute break and just go down to the table, or just go right down for our work session.
Let's take a 10-minute break to...
Get to the table?
Yep.
Okay. So we're gonna do our work session, next item, down at the table, because we enjoy working together in that way, so if we could reconvene at 8:48, please, down at the table.
Okay. Back into order, we have one work session tonight, Development of the Town of Morrisville 2023-2024 Legislative Advocacy Agenda. Erin L. Hudson, our Strategic Performance Manager, will facilitate the work session.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So we will try to move through this relatively efficiently tonight. Have a few things that I want to cover with you all, so I've gotten a little bit of an outline here for you. So we'll just sort of quickly review and cover how Morrisville developed its last legislative advocacy agenda. We really sort of use the NCLM municipal advocacy goals as a template. We'll summarize some of the legislation from this most recent biennium and how that aligned with the legislative priorities that you all established. We'll talk a little bit about some of the challenges that we're aware of, and some of the opportunities that we can build on moving forward. We will share a few preliminary staff-recommended priorities for you to discuss, consider, review, and my presentation takes about 10, maybe 15 minutes tops, and then we'll dedicate the remainder of your time, which is about 30 minutes is what you all have allotted after that, to your discussion. We've prepared a feedback survey tool for you as well, and then we also can just sort of round out the discussion with a review of the process timeline that we've outlined, and handle any remaining questions you have. If you have questions at any point, feel free to jump in and stop me if it's something I'm going to address at a future point in time, we can just hold it until then. So if that works for everybody, we'll, we'll just move on. All right. So again, we'll just start with a little bit of a review of how the latest legislative advocacy agenda was formed, and as I stated, we use the NCLM advocacy goals sort of as a template, and the way that NCLM develops their process, and let me clarify, NCLM is North Carolina Good Municipalities, they work really closely with us, we work really closely with them, they advocate on our behalf and on behalf of all municipalities when they work at the North Carolina General Assembly. So they develop municipal advocacy goals for each biennium, and they do that through a collaborative effort with over 500 member agencies that are a part of NCLM. So they have a legislative policy committee, and we are fortunate to have a handful of staff and elected officials who serve on that legislative policy committee, and they solicit feedback from their member organizations on any types of goals, focus areas, et cetera. That policy committee will then synthesize that, sort of categorize those, and then that helps them sort of formulate into what their municipal advocacy goals become. So of the hundreds of potential goals that they received, they were narrowed to 12 goals under their five identified focus areas for the 2122 biennium. Those were approved by NCLM's board, and then also endorsed by town council in your last advocacy agenda resolution. In the fall of 2020, dedicated a couple of work session meetings to go through a few rounds of goal identification and prioritization for Morrisville. Again, we utilized those focus areas that NCLM had identified for the final sort of structure that we determined. Council approved nine priorities, and staff has utilized those when either advocating on behalf of the town, or to share with other groups to utilize when they advocate on our behalf. Such as NCLM, we also share our advocacy agenda with the chamber every two years as So as you know, we track potential affecting legislation when the General Assembly is in session, and then we share that with town council at regular intervals. So I want to take a little bit of time to share a summary of some of that legislation, and how that aligned with the priorities that you all established and identified for the 2122 biennium. Real quickly, just want to set the stage for the next few slides. So here at the top, you will see the NCLM focus area, again, where we sort of structured our advocacy agenda through, and then the italicized lines are the Morrisville priorities, and then the bulleted area is the legislation. So for resilient infrastructure, there was some focus on energy, sustainability, NC, NC DOT funding, particularly some expanded or influx of funding for those. So there was not a particular one dedicated piece of legislation there, but in the 2022 Appropriations Act, there was some additional funding dedicated in a one-time transfer from the Highway Trust Fund to the Highway Fund that is specifically dedicated to speeding up right-of-way acquisition for STIP projects. As Morrisville has a unique combination of both local and state-maintained roads, we work with regional, state, federal partners on these road projects, so that can be of particular importance to us as we look at future priorities, future projects. About 90% of the allocation to the Highway Trust Fund is for STIP projects. They have indicated there will be increased funding recurring. Also, within that session law, there is a portion of the sales and use tax proceeds that generally go to the general fund, that are going to be going to that Highway Fund and Highway Trust Fund for transportation needs. Typically, it starts, or it has started at 2%, and it is going to advance up to 6% through 2024, 25. So there is some awareness and some dedicated funding, at least to transportation needs at the state level, that was passed through legislation. Moving along to the priority of wanting to be able to see government employees participate in specifically implicit bias training, and then also looking for an established funding source. So I will share that of 32 bills that we tracked related to either police, fire, public safety, anything like that, a quarter of those referenced either additional training, crisis intervention, mental health support, something along those lines for first responders. So the two bills that I've identified here don't specifically reference implicit bias training, but they do support updated or enhanced training initiatives. Again, neither of these bills has a dedicated funding source, but we know that with some additional things that are identified in legislation, a dedicated funding source is not always identified or outlined. So this is something that you're going to see a couple of times. As we are tracking legislation, we track anything that we think may be affecting to Morrisville or to our region, to our area. So you will see it noted at least a couple of times that no substantive legislation was approved to support this advocacy position. So you'll see it here, and also on the next slide, and this is particularly related to unfunded mandates, which has been, again, ongoing point of conversation. You'll also see it here, related to removal of class-size limit mandates, and then you'll see it again a couple of slides from now.
Question.
Yes, ma'am.
So was it that the K through 3 mandate was unfunded, or that the K through 3 mandate to fund it was not funded?
So the, the remove class-size limit mandate on public schools K through 3 was Morrisville's advocacy position, and there was no substantive legislation that approved, or approved that would support that position?
To support Morrisville's position.
Correct.
Okay. It's gonna take a bit, but thank you.
Yeah, sorry about that.
So that means there was no legislation approved to remove that class size mandate?
Yes.
Okay.
Sometimes people are confused that, sometimes in children, we say this, that lowering the class size is what may touch crowded schools, I think. People, the public doesn't understand that, like, having lower class sizes, that's actually creating a lot of the problems of crowded schools. Ask that.
Propose any legislation?
He's, he's just, that's what, something that people don't understand, that they're just about on these schools.
I don't recall off the top of my head.
Yeah, I don't. I don't have the votes.
It affects the urban schools.
Okay. So you had a number of positions under Adaptive Municipal Operations, so this expands over a couple of slides. a couple of slides. So this one specifically is focusing on revenue replacement. Lots of discussion previously about hotel motel tax, food and beverage tax, transportation tax, different types of privilege fees, impact fees, et cetera. So again, similarly to unfunded mandates, revenue replacement is an ongoing topic of conversation that has been on the table since before I got into local government almost 16 years ago. So did not specifically identify any legislation that would support revenue replacement, but we did identify and track some legislation that demonstrates a few other impacts. So what I mean by that, the first one, House Bill 73, to temporarily waive ABC permit renewal fees. So that bill in particular has actually already timed out, but at the time that it was in place, allowed individuals who had needed to pay for a renewal or registration fee for an ABC permit that was going to be for the period of May 1st, 2021, through April 30 of 2022, to defer that payment from April of 2021 to October of 2021. It doesn't sound all that egregious. However, if there's a six-month delay in what is typically a forecasted revenue, that can be impactful, particularly for municipalities of different sizes that may have a lot of businesses who require ABC permits. So it's just, it's just one of those things that, again, we watch, we just listen to, pay attention to.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Do those ABC permit renewal fees come to the town of Morrisville or to the state?
Sorry. No, you're fine. Go ahead.
Well, do those fees come down to Morrisville? Do they pay them to Morrisville or the state?
So there are permit fees at the local level as well.
The ABC permit?
As far as I know, yes. If I'm...
Just clarification, they're paid to the state, but there's a formula where we get a share based on that state formula.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So again, it's just one of those things where we just try to follow and pay attention and learn because they do have that trickle-down effect. So the second one is that same appropriation act that we mentioned when discussing the transportation highway trust fund transfer. So, yes.
How much is the trust fund we're talking about? How many billions?
So they identified, I can tell you. So total funding in the Highway Fund and Highway Trust Fund expected to increase by $933 million, with a $109 million one-time transfer to the Highway Trust Fund to speed up right-of-way purchases for STIP projects. And then 90% of the allocation to the Highway Trust Fund for STIP projects, and that was in, I believe that one was in the billions. And again, you know, we're a piece of that pie, but if it's a bigger pie, maybe we get a bigger slice. So continuing with our adaptive municipal operations, one of the town's priorities was to enact legislation stricter than state standards for stream buffers. So this is a little bit of an uphill battle to try and make a case for local authority to be stricter than state authority. So similar to some of the previous slides, this legislation that I've outlined is not specific to stream buffers, but a lot of them have very specific references to stormwater, development authority. Again, we know there's that trickle-down or sort of domino effect. We're very fortunate, we have very intelligent staff that are very well-versed in these things as well. So within these, sorry, someone say something? I feel like there's an echo. Maybe it's just me.
You're in that spot.
I am. So within the legislation that I've outlined here, there are multiple protections for stormwater watershed programs, annual compliance certifications for stormwater programs. There are some additional prohibitions for watershed rules when certain circumstances apply. So just again, a lot of layered types of rules. One of the pieces of legislation directs DEQ to conduct a study to expedite permit issuance under express permit and review certification programming to fast-track permitting for stormwater management. Those findings and recommendations are actually supposed to be delivered at the end of this year to the joint legislative committee that they've specified that to.
Question here, like, is it for the new municipalities or the old municipalities? Like, allow municipalities to enact legislation stricter than state standard. The state standard is 50 feet buffer, and Kerry has 100. So that's their standard. So I want to ask, is that for any new ones, it's restricted because Kerry already has 100?
So again, this wasn't specific. The allow municipalities to enact legislation stricter than state standards for stream buffers, that was Morrisville's position. And the legislation that I'm outlining is either related to, that could potentially support, it's not necessarily specific to that position, but it's how, if it is in any way related, is that better clarified?
I get it, but what I mean to say is like the certain rules which are already made, like, you know, like in the past, like Kerry does impact fees and those kind of things, those were done. So is it for new ones that are coming in, or the existing ones are already BA? That's what my question is.
Not sure I'm following your question.
So the question I'm asking is, we are asking for a stricter standard than the 50-foot buffer, right? That's what we're asking. Other towns have already got that. And before you're asking this, so do we compare with them as a role model, or basically we have to put our application individually as each town asking for stricter standards? Is my question.
So certain towns already got special legislation that allow them to be stricter than the state, and so that's what we would like to have our, we'd like the same, comparable.
Yeah, comparable, then how did they get in? And we are, we are struggling if we are to get in. That's what I meant.
That's a real good question. How did, how did they get their authority while the rest of us didn't?
Different people in town.
Yeah.
More like we did with Kerry about having additional, if they'd be amenable to us, piggybacking on their already existing local bill, although I'd imagine that would be a little bit futile, but maybe worth exploring. This is the first of three briefs we're going to have on this, so that's maybe something staff can give us an opinion on.
Well, and I'll just add, aside from what Frank has already said, it is you as council members that have to go do the work and lobby for local bills. So that is an extremely heavy workload in an environment that is not conducive to doing that. So just as you make your choices, that workload goes back on to council members, or elected officials advocating to elected officials.
Understood.
Yeah.
That's helpful.
Yeah, and I would, I would add on that. I think we, I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying this based on this specific topic that we're talking about right now, but I think we really need to pick our battles. I think we need to, if you go out there and battle for everything, I think that's, personally, I think that's the wrong approach.
And I don't want to steal Aaron's thunder, but just since I took the floor, or he gave me the floor. Relationship building is still the first thing we need to be focusing on. We have to develop those relationships that we pick up phones and call and people answer. And again, staff can support, but that's not who they directly want to hear from. And then I think, as you talk about picking your battles, you don't need 100 goals. What are the two, three, four most important things, and then let's focus on those.
And to, well, and to add to that, you know, in years past, we would go down as a council and staff to the legislature, and, you know, even though that was only a part of this relationship building, I think that mattered. And of course, we haven't been able to do that. I'm not sure if we can even do that now. I'm not sure how open they are.
I think it's going to start opening again. I really think people are wanting to have those connections. I see that in every facet of our government and, you know, private lives, so.
So you're out of time.
That's okay. We're going to circle back to this. So this is the last slide for the Morrisville positions. Again, at the time that this legislative advocacy agenda was built, we were deep in the throes of COVID-19. A lot of municipalities really feeling significant impacts from that. And so really, I think Morrisville really wanted to be able to support additional relief for that. So the state budget bill from 2021 did have some very specific language that allowed for targeted grants to be offered. It authorized use of ARPA funds, lots of things like that. Restoration of municipal authority for really local development control. Again, no substantive legislation that supported this position. And I'll talk a little bit more about that here in just a moment. So based on some of the happenings at the legislature, through our conversation with staff and our regional partners, we know that there are some challenges ahead, but also some areas of opportunity. And you all have, in fact, already touched on some of these. Municipal authority, local control, always a big topic. With continued growth and development, not only in our area but across the state, we probably will continue to see some challenges in balancing the desires of private development and what we desire to be able to do locally, not just us, but communities all around us. We have seen that things can happen very quickly at the legislature. Bills can be introduced with one title, pass one chamber, meet the crossover deadline, get stripped, and become something entirely different. And as hard as we work, and as hard as you work, to maintain contact and maintain those relationships with our delegates, with NCLM, there are just times that we may be behind in either obtaining information or receiving information that could potentially be impactful to us or to our region. So everyone has sort of alluded to the upcoming election here in the next couple of weeks. It will play a role in some of those relationships, some of those dynamics. All 120 seats in the general assembly are up for election. Four of seven seats with Wake County Commissioners are up for election. All Wake County Public School System Board seats are up for election. So the decision-makers outside of this local level potentially will shift around. So it does play a role in what we could potentially be able to do. However, Martha stole my thunder, Morrisville has always, since I have been here, had strong relationships with our delegates, with their staff. We're going to continue to enhance and build on those. We will forge relationships with any new delegates that may be in place. We're doing a couple of things here as well. So we are working independently, as well as with staff at NCLM, to build a local network of legislative liaisons here in Wake County. It's really just going to be able to provide us another channel to share and communicate some of those legislative needs, particularly with our local partners. So other municipalities here in Wake County, there are a lot of us that do this in addition to our other daily work. And I'm not saying that to pat anybody on the back, but we just don't have some of the same resources that some other agencies have. And so we find ourselves talking to one another, and in those conversations, we're like, man, it'd be great to have a group that we just can share information with. So that's what we're going to do. And we've talked with NCLM, and they're supportive, and they're helping us out, so we're working on building that.
Aaron's brainchild.
I can't do it alone. I've already mentioned, we have a number of really talented, smart, and engaged staff in this town. A lot of them also have affiliation or membership with professional organizations. I have leaned on them immensely in the last couple of years while the legislature has been in session. So that is another layer to us obtaining information, getting input, getting insight. And our continued collaboration with NCLM, they are one of our strongest partners when it comes to working with the general assembly, working with our delegates. So we value that partnership, and we're going to continue to foster that relationship as well. All right. Based on previous discussions with town council and just hearing your discussion, your input, your passions, your priorities, we have listened and captured some potential preliminary focus areas, really just to prompt your thoughts, your initial discussion. By no means is this an inclusive, exhaustive, definitive list, really just to assist as you get started in this process. So considering the information that you've heard and you've shared thus far, just want us to move into that council discussion. I'm happy to flip back to any slides that you may want to review further. I do have a couple of questions. I'm happy to leave it on this slide, and I can still give you your prompting questions however you wish to proceed.
I like this group of five right there. I don't really see anything that's getting back to like one thing, any use, like an alternate revenue. Likely, I like it to sort of still be on our radar. I know Wake County is thinking about trying to create tax that they would administer. It's going to be a way to piggyback on... Possibly included in our focus.
What does that mean?
Just the idea of getting a hotel motel tax or increase, just another revenue for the localities.
So I'm trying to understand, like, say, now we have 8.5 or 7.5.
Yeah, I think I'd be really careful about a sales tax increase.
Because that comes to the state, and state to county, and county to this one. So when you're saying increase it for just Morrisville, I don't know if there's a way to do that. I'm asking the question. I don't know that answer.
Let's kind of piggyback on if NCLM's ongoing seeking of alternative...
I think we need to be careful about adding more revenue, new revenue. I'm more in the mindset of reallocating existing motel... I'm more in the mindset of reallocating existing motel hotel tax to those municipalities that generated a little bit more. I mean, Morrisville generates a lot of hotel motel tax, and we are not getting, I think, back as much as, not a one for one, but it just seems like we are definitely a contributor and not a recipient.
I agree. I totally agree. We're not getting, we were not a party to that agreement that was made, you know, I don't know how many years ago.
Before Morrisville had hotels.
Before Morrisville had hotels.
So Wake County is unique in that they have the authority, and all of the revenue really supports PNC, the Convention Center, and the third one. It was the Carolina here at Canes was in there to support, support those things to generate tax. And so the Wake County relationship is very unique as compared to many. Hospitality and occupancy tax is not handled the same across. And this was by special legislation at the state. So it's a much different kind of conversation. This is law. This is not a revenue allocation. This is law that's in, and I'd suggest that we would probably want to get a much more in-depth understanding of how it works to further your conversation.
I was going, yeah, I think that's fine. I was going to say, I think, I think we have better odds at asking for our own hotel motel tax on top of that than getting a piece of that pie because, and you're right, we need to have more information. But it was my understanding that that money was accounted, there's very little discretionary money.
That is, I am on that inter-local community representing small towns. I and Bill Summers from Knightdale. It is not generating what is needed to support those facilities, let alone, so how does Morrisville benefit? It's when we get those small or mid-sized capital project opportunities, that we've received a couple of them, is how we've received some money back for some direct project support.
But back to Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson's point, it's not our fair share at all.
Yeah.
And plus, we had to have good projects also that, you know, we don't have, you know, to support it for their cause, you know, like I think Wake Competition Center was good and the lights that we used.
I mean, we're always looking to be a good partner in Wake County and generate revenue and so forth. It's just, you know, just giving additional one center whatever without really understanding the impact that we're trying to create. I think we need to refine our needs and wants a little bit more.
Speaking of refining our needs and wants, workforce housing, I think that just as a bullet point, needs to be a lot more developed, like there's no specific ask there, and there's no, look, I don't have honestly any sense of what we're actually advocating for when we say that. So I think that needs to be, that needs to be fleshed out a little bit more.
And that's for council to determine.
Okay.
So example could be homeownership, workforce housing, you know, as it relates to homeownership opportunities. Also, we've been looking at rental reduction or market rate reductions for lowering barriers, but homeownership is something that I know many of us have talked about.
Well, how would this state legislature affect that? Have been a screen.
Yes.
Have the authority to say you can only have so much rental property.
Items you're looking for tonight.
Yep, so that's why I flipped to this last slide. So did have these couple of just sort of prompting discussion questions, but really to let you all know that you're going to get a survey tool from me. I'm going to send that in an email as soon as we're done here. It is seven questions. It's a combination of multiple choice, Likert scale, short answer. Should take you about 15 minutes. You can do it on your computer, on your mobile device, whatever is easiest and most comfortable for you. But it's really going to build off of the discussion you started here tonight. So I didn't want you to think you had to nail down everything at this minute. You'll get your list of priorities from the 21, 22 advocacy agenda. Take a look at those, and you'll be asked, do you feel like these should move forward? Yes, no, maybe, whatever. Do they need to be reframed, reworded? You'll also get the preliminary staff recommended items, same thing. Do you feel like these should move forward? And if so, okay. If not, and reworded, let us know. Then we're going to ask you to identify what are your top five priorities? If it's some of these, if it's none of these and something different, let us know. And then we want you to rank order those. Number one, most critical, highest priority. Number five, not that it's not a priority, but it could maybe hold a little bit. To Martha's point, this is going to be a tough legislative session, I think. I think all signs are sort of pointing that way. So we want to be really strategic in anything that we put forward in an advocacy agenda because, again, that's what we'll share with partners so they can help advocate on our behalf. And so we need to make sure that if it's five items, two items, whatever council decides, that those are really solid, well-defined items.
But Erin, the thing is that, I mean, there's an election in two weeks, and that's going to, basically, that's going to determine what's likely to go forward, what's going to die in committee for the next two years. I mean, it's, I'm not exactly sure that, until we have that information, I'm not sure that it makes sense to talk about an advocacy agenda because we don't really know what things it's going to be worth our time to advocate for.
Is it going to be much different? It's either going to be bad or...
I mean, well, I mean...
He's right.
I think also, yeah, let me just chime in here. Here are my final thoughts. I think that we have to look at the limited amount of time we have and what can we really, really get done, bottom line, you know? Like for me, when I looked at that list, I'd like to have, like, I think infrastructure is something that both the Democrats, Republicans can get behind at the federal level in terms of transportation, process, and things like that. That'd be up more than most, like getting investments in our roads, you know, before president. Also going to be dependent on our delegation and what their relationships are with Republicans because it's going to remain to be Republican majority. And all they need is three votes in the Senate and a couple votes in the House, and they get back to supermajority. So that's where the body's right. Then it's like game over because they can basically do anything they want and veto, you know, override the governor's veto. So, but I think infrastructure is important, and then maybe workforce housing because there's a housing crisis. And when Brian Laura spoke today, he reminded us of all the different things. So that's something people can come together on and say, look, how can we help? So I think we just have to make sure that we don't take too much on. What are three or four things that we think we have, we can forward? But then more importantly, it's going to be on our delegation and our legislature that represents us in terms of the relationships they have, not only on the Democrat side, but on the other side, because nothing is going to pass without Republican support.
Yeah, like, I mean, maybe some, like, small business grants or some type of small business support. I feel like that has a prayer of maybe getting out of committee someday.
But like, I like Rouse says, I think we could go for the infrastructure, the local transportation and mobility infrastructure. I think we should whittle this down to like two or three items.
And that's what the survey should do.
Yeah.
And I agree.
But the thing is, like, I look at it a different way. Election will not matter either way because our needs are not changing based on the election. You know, we have what we have, we need it no matter what, who wins. That change, that need is there. Just because, you know, if it's a Republican majority, we're not saying our roads or needs are going away. It may get delayed, but so for us, you make our list solid and be ready, and then, you know, we'll play the game, whatever happens there. Because if we are just thinking based on what will happen, I think our changes are not going, none of the things are going to change from our point of view, our needs.
Right, but the, I'm saying that the level of futility in advocating for will change. Pretention, that's what I'm saying. So I'm saying, let's rather than beat our head against a wall on five things, let's narrow down to a couple things that could actually get done, like where we could, where we might be able to move the needle a little bit.
I agree with that approach.
So we're going to have the opportunity to fill out this survey, and you're going to, we're going to be given five. You said you're going to send a survey tonight, so it's already set. So why don't we see what the results from that is? And then to your point, I mean, next time we get together and discuss this, it will be after the election anyhow, and we can whittle it down to...
What? So, yes, so...
Wait, I like that. We moved it. Oh, yes.
All right, so I'll, I'll just go over our next steps. So as soon as, as we wrap tonight, I will send you your survey tool. It's a link, you click on it. Like I said, you can do it on your computer, your iPhone, whatever you need to do. I am going to ask that you get that back to me no later than next Friday, November 4th. So you have roughly a week and a half. We will come back together as a group here at your November 22nd work session. At that time, I will have pulled all of your information together. I will also have talked to staff. And what I'm going to do is sort of layer those together and see what themes arise. And so I'll give you, I'll be able to give you a composite picture of what either staff is hearing from their professional affiliations and memberships and what you all have determined as priorities. And from there, depending on whatever that shakes out to be, I think that's where you can really come to your consensus on what your priority areas need to be, whatever that is that you determine, if it's two, if it's five, what have you. From that point, we'll bring back a brief end action at your December 13th meeting, and we'll tie a bow on it and be ready.
We have a board meeting of NCLM on December 5th or 6th.
Okay.
So I think this topic will come there. So are you saying, like, we don't have our list before that and push it to the...
So what NCLM does is separate and aside from what we do. The Legislative Policy Committee, I'm on that committee, Martha's on that committee, and I think there's a couple others. We're going to meet three more times before November 22nd. So I will be able to share with you as well some of that feedback that's been coming in from the state. So you'll be able to see if other people have the same sort of concerns and priorities that you all do or not. But then you'll be able to sort of have that conversation on November 22nd as well.
So this has nothing to do with NCLM? It kind of gives you a flavor, but nothing...
Yeah, like I said, we sort of used that as a template the last time. And typically, sort of historically, we have also included a reference to support of whatever NCLM's advocacy positions, goals, et cetera, are in Town Council's advocacy resolution is as well.
So one thing, you've already created the survey, but is there some way for us to provide our thoughts about like essentially a futility score on certain items? I'm kind of joking, but kind of not, that it's important to know what's most important, but it's most futile, too, so to balance that.
I don't think it's funny at all. I think it's sad.
So it's not a futility score. However, the way that I've organized a couple of them, so your previous items from the 21, 22 Legislative Advocacy Agenda are Likert scaled. So you can say that you support those moving forward, you support them moving forward to be reworded or reframed, you're neutral, or you don't support them moving forward. Doesn't mean they're not important, just means you don't need them to take up space right now. Likert scaled the same way for the staff recommended, just preliminary options for you to consider. And then asking you all to give us a list of your five. And it could be those, it could be something different, it could be a combination. And then rank those, one to five. So that five is sort of the lower end of the totem pole. So if that's where you don't want to spend as much of your time because you're just not sure it's going to go in your favor, that's sort of where I'd put your futility score, if that makes sense.
I want us all to be doing our top five with the same idea, like this is the number one that I think that we can get done, or this is the most important, although it might not get done.
I see what you're saying. There's kind of a ranking of priorities, but then there's the ranking of, okay, strategically, based on what we know about the legislature, which ones, which ones are the most like, like, re-prioritized?
So do we want to do that as we do this, to sort of say, this is important and I think we can get it done? Do you want that to be our first?
I'd like to take the survey, and then at the next meeting, we can talk about this adjustment. Because I'd like to see how we all are first as a baseline. I understand futility scoring, but let's just see what we need. And sometimes even if it's a really futile thing, if we focus, we are an amazing team. And I think that might be worthy of us doubling down on some things. So I don't want to automatically dismiss something because I think it's hard. I want to see how everybody first ranks things.
We can use for futile for a while, and then you got them. So.
I think that's how, that's kind of what Satish said, too. There are things that are important. I want to approach it that way, and then we have time to regroup and analyze and tweak.
Aspirational and the low-hanging fruit.
There you go. Let's not call it a futility score, though. Let's call it a feasibility score.
That's better.
I mean, let's stay on the side of, oh, still get a label.
I like to be optimistic.
Futility, I just like that.
Okay, all right.
What you need to do by November 4th.
Yes.
Yes.
You can turn it in early. That often happens.
You certainly can.
I had the same discussion with my son.
Any, any final questions I can answer for anyone?
She won't, she won't like it, but if you want to give Erin the best wedding present ever, complete your survey by November 4th.
Yes.
It was a week ago.
What? Oh, my God. Congratulations. How did I not know that? Did we get, what the hell are you guys? What are you doing?
Happy marriage song.
Yeah, his recommendations.
Noting everybody that the date's the next evening.
Wednesday, November 9th.
Yes.
That's part of the final stuff here.
I won't be here Tuesday.
Term manager page, anything for the good of order? Already had that conversation. Term manager page, anything for the good of order?
Past few order day.
Adjourned. Okay. Everyone, thank you for watching this meeting of the Morrisville Town Council. We hope you plan to join us again. Our next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, November 9th, one day after Election Day. Please feel free to email your Town Council members at towncouncil@townofmorrisville.org or visit www.townofmorrisville.org/council for additional contact information. Is there a motion and second to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion and second.
Aye.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very unanimous, 7-0. It is 9:37. We are adjourned. Thank you all.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Go get your magazines.